Certainly, Mr. Moushak.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Tabatnik?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
And Mr. Shawman?
Here. Um, I believe at this time, um, with the absence, uh, we, we have, I think Richard is, uh, not here. Uh, we can, um, seat both, um, uh, Anna and Chapin. Um, but as, as Anna has indicated, um, um, she should excuse herself from, um, voting on the, uh, the first matter. And the first matter is, uh, twenty twenty-three dash forty R slash M. Peter and Lisa Lane, Three River Road, uh, to amend the building zone regulations, Article fifty, section one hundred eighteen dash five thirty-one. River Road, uh, two expansion of the Silvermine Tavern Village District to include Three River Road, District Five, Block Forty-four, Lot Two, Five River Road, District Five, Block Forty-four, Lot Eleven, Six River Road, District Five, Block Thirty-nine, Lot Twenty-nine, and River Road, District Five, Block Thirty-nine, Lot Twelve A, and a portion of one zero three-two Silvermine Avenue, District Five, Block Forty-four, Lot, uh, Seven. Uh, first, uh, my apologies, uh, for those of you who attended, uh, the last meeting at which we discussed this. Midway through the conversation, uh, our, uh, computer service cut out. Uh, was not the fault of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not even certain that we know, uh, precisely why it happened. Uh, but it did not permit us to, uh, continue, uh, the meeting. Uh, however, when it cut out, we were, uh, at that portion of the meeting where we had opened, uh, the meeting, uh, up for public comment. And, um, rather than have the applicant go through the, uh, entire explanation of the project, um, a, a second time, uh, I think it's reasonable to start where we left off. Uh, so the first question I would ask, uh, is whether the Turners who were speaking at that point are, are with us this evening.
Yeah, it looks like they are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, then I would, uh, call back, uh, the Turners, uh, to, um, hear their comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us, uh, again, we appreciate it. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead with your comments. Uh, begin with, if you would, uh, by giving us, uh, your name and address.
Sure, uh, we did this, uh, last time on, on November, uh, second, I believe, or the first. Um, we are Robert Betsy and Evan Turner. Evan Turner speaking of Seven River Road, Norwalk, Connecticut, the budding property to Five River Road. Um, we, uh, had a prepared speech written out for last time, but I've ripped it up. Um, so, uh, we'll start over. Uh, we purchased this property in, uh, June twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-two, uh, from Marty Brown, Martin Brown. Uh, this property has, uh, a historic part to the neighborhood. The barn on this property and ADU, uh, to the main house, uh, is circa eighteen fifty. Uh, this is where, uh, uh, John Baird, uh, and his wife, uh, first established a commercial business, uh, selling antiques, uh, which then they, uh, began selling through the current location of the Mercantile, um, across from the Silvermine Tavern, which is now the Gray Barnes. They established the Silvermine Tavern in nineteen twenty-eight. Um, and, uh, brought in, uh, Kenneth Gatesmore from Texas, his cousin, uh, to help him with selecting antiques as well as to, uh, help him, uh, establish a cabinet, uh, maker, which then ended up turning into a lighting business known as Gatesmore Lighting, uh, which is still in business, but moved off the property in two thousand nineteen, uh, to New Hampshire. Uh, so there's historic, uh, properties, abutting, uh, the property that's being called the Gatesmore Development at Three and Five River Road, and we are, you know, a significant, uh, part of the Gatesmore history. Um, we purchased the property through Preo. Uh, Preo is owned by Peter Lane and, uh, they were the seller of the property, uh, to us. Uh, we did not know, uh, that we would be moving next to a condominium association that is being planned. Uh, we thought we were purchasing a historic property that had a new house on it, uh, that would be adjacent to, uh, another historic property, uh, with some open, uh, space on that property. Um, so this is, uh, you know, a significant, uh, uh, change to what we had envisioned for our property. I'm sure each of you, if you were buying a, a home and then you found out a year later, you know, six, six properties were going to be right next to you in a condominium association, I'm sure that would be a little different, uh, than you had originally, originally planned, uh, and we, we are wondering, is that going to impact the our livelihood as well as the value of our property? Um, there's already a lot of traffic on the street. We would, uh, request, uh, before any decision is made that a traffic study be performed, uh, due to, uh, the construction vehicles as well as the potential, uh, new residences, uh, moving in, uh, assuming that a total of six homes are being, uh, uh, combined, uh, on that Three and Five River Road development, so four additional, uh, new construction homes. Um, you're going to have at least two to three cars per home. Uh, that's, you know, a lot more than just the one car of our neighbor currently, or the two cars at Three, uh, River Road currently, et cetera. Uh, so we are also concerned about the safety on the street. A lot of people are walking on the street and, uh, because there is no yellow line on the street, even though it's bidirectional into New Canaan from Norwalk, uh, we're concerned that that could has, uh, safety impact, uh, as well as on our own property, uh, many cars use our property, uh, to turn around and, uh, due to the size of the, um, apron of the driveway, uh, and that it's the first paved, um, uh, driveway, uh, after the Gray Barn, uh, restaurant, um. And we also are concerned about, uh, what another member of the community brought up, um, Andy Glazer on the November first Zoom meeting, uh, is about the drainage. Uh, we believe there are some drainage issues coming down from the hill that exceed, um, what we, uh, should anticipate at a property, and so we're concerned that adding additional structures is going to, uh, continue to, uh, accelerate, uh, some drainage issues, um, uh, on the adjacent, uh, abutting property. As we are the, uh, largest, um, in terms of a budding property length, um, of a residential property to the planned development in Norwalk, the other abutting property that's a little bit larger is, um, the Gray Barnes commercial property. We believe that we will be, uh, significantly impacted, uh, more than other properties, um, that, uh, but, uh, the Three and Five River Road development. Um, the ones at, uh, I believe it's One River Road, which is part of the current HOA, um, there's four properties across from the Gray Barnes Restaurant that, uh, Mr. Glazer, uh, constructed, uh, for the purpose of getting the funds to then preserve the Silvermine Tavern into what it is today. Um, they knowingly purchased a property really close to each other. That's part of an HOA association, so, um, I think their, uh, opinion, uh, may not be the same, uh, as our opinion not being part of that type of association. Uh, and we also, you know, question the intent of this, uh, given that while you want to preserve the historic nature, well, preserving the historic nature would be to leave them as they are, uh, rather than build, uh, four new construction houses or, or potentially six, depending on how, how you proceed with it. And, uh, we also, you know, questioned how, you know, just any resident in Norwalk can simply change legal text, uh, in, uh, the zoning, um, laws, uh, so easily, uh, this could open up Pandora's box for other neighborhoods or, or other neighbors to do something, um, uh, similarly. So we want to have our voice heard and we hope that you've heard our voice.
Thank you. Um, uh, two very quick comments unrelated. Um, uh, we've been joined by another one of our commissioners, uh, Richard Rowena. Um, I just wanted to point that out, and I understand, uh, Mr. Glazer, that you have your hand up. Um, we only permit people at these public hearings to speak once. Um, you spoke at the hearing, uh, two weeks ago, so, uh, we will not recognize you again this evening. Um, um, all right, with that, let's, uh, move on, uh, to, uh, the next speaker.
Your next is Andrew Deary.
Can people hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Um, I recognize some faces out there. Uh, I'm in Butter, uh, at ten twenty-two Silvermine Road in New Canaan with a piece of property about point four acres at the rear of my property in Norwalk. Um, it abuts Peter Lane's, Lane's property. Peter and I have known each other for years. I've been here twenty-seven years in the Silvermine, uh, neighborhood. Um, and I just wanted to weigh in and, and certainly talk to a number of neighbors walking around in the neighborhood because it's a very walkable community, as we know. Um, and to, uh, uh, someone mentioned, uh, Andy Glazer, who I also know well, who, uh, I think did an admirable job with his project, uh, of four, uh, quote cottages, um, on the Silvermine, formerly a parking lot. I've seen that whole redevelopment over the years and the restoration of the inn and the Gray Barnes and the, um, Mercantile, et cetera. So, uh, I, I, I very much like, uh, what Andy has done. Um, I'm in the real estate development business, not in the residential side, though, and like what Andy did. And I've mentioned to Peter, just, you know, uh, we talked over the years really about this project. Um, and now it's, it's coming closer to, uh, where the application's in. I just had really three comments. One is just, I, and I've mentioned this already, I'm not speaking out of school with Peter, that, um, the, the, uh, just the letters going out and that sort of thing. I think the first one was sort of an odd one in that, and, and I know Andy, uh, the engineers on this too, but it was just mentioned that, oh, and, and I know the letter didn't have to go out, I was told, but that they wanted waivers from traffic and, uh, I think the other one was, uh, drainage and, yeah, drainage and traffic. Maybe that was just mentioning, this is a, for a rezone, not for a site plan, but it just got off on the wrong, got me going on the wrong foot with, um, the same process really has to be gone through just like anybody else. I mean, you can't even, uh, just that it was in the letter was sort of just raised a flag for me, which again, I mentioned to Peter saying, you know, you're not gonna, you can't go around this stuff. I mean, people certainly, uh, I'm up gradient from some of this, uh, from some of the abutters. Um, you, you have to follow, whether it's the fire department, the all, all the, the, the necessary things to get into site plan approval, which is one step further. Um, and that brings up another thing, but number of things, but I, I won't go into those specifically. I think my other point being, um, just the clarity of some of the letters and the clarity of the information going out. And I've looked at the sites and we've shared plans. Um, uh, I think there's a little too much math involved. Um, it was, I don't think reading this, uh, the first or second or third time, I could find out exactly how many houses were going on this property. Um, is it two existing plus six more? Is it six total? Is what's being preserved, uh, is a barn that was on a property being included as an existing and being put back up on a similar footprint? And then it came down to, I think, a rewrite of the, um, of, of one of the letters from the engineers saying that it looks like, um, uh, it, I, I mean, I still was a little confused about it. I think it changed it to thirty thousand square feet. Well, how many acres do you have? And, and people are probably saying, well, how many feet in an acre and doing the math? And how many houses is it two point seven or one point nine? And houses, what's a point nine house? So it, I think that clarity is, from my standpoint, is like, how many houses are going here? You've got two. How many more? And I guess if I deciphered it, it sounds like, and the pictures, um, show, uh, a total of six, two existing, four more. Um, so my third point being in, in retrospect, I think it's too many. Um, I think the density, part of it stems from the acreage involved that's being included in the project. Um, I think if I've got my numbers right from the application page, the, the very first, um, second page was that there's a piece of land along the river, which is point seven three or acres plus point oh three, and, uh, that is being included in the, in the, uh, in the, the land area, but nothing's going to be built in that land area. The, the, that, but that's being used to the advantage of putting more density on a smaller area. Um, and so I, I, in, in, and honestly, the, you know, what can be done in this, on this site, um, is probably something, but I'm not sure the density is appropriate. I, I, two houses would have buttoned me. Um, Peter and I talked about the architecture, there's a lot of review to do, et cetera. I think, uh, we all like this type of housing, uh, in general, not necessarily here or in the, in the density, in my opinion, uh, having thought this through. So I think that that would be, and, and also I would say to Peter directly that, you know, it sounds like you're trying to get sort of a lot into too little in the wrong configuration because you'll also be staring right at these houses that you're going to be building, and they may be beautiful, et cetera. And then the, so that's, those are the three points really, because you get into other things about site plan with septics, where are they going to go? Parking, I know the other neighbor just spoke about, you know, two and three cars per house. Um, if you just compare what Andy Glazer's built visually from thirty thousand feet with the overlay plan of Peter's plan, he's only got four houses, those have a barn, is more land. Um, but land that is actually being built on, he's not using land, which is sort of down the street to say, let's put more density on the smaller piece of land. So I think that's a, uh, a major consideration besides the points of, um, you know, do they have basements? I know a lot of Andy's houses in the area don't have basements. Um, besides all the work that has to be done blasting and, or not, uh, but I just think that, um, those are my three points really, and I thought I'd weigh in, uh, and let, um, some of the neighbors know, uh, how I feel about it generally. I think there's something, uh, to be done here. I just think it has to be reduced, and of course, I'd like it reduced, uh, from my property, uh, borders. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Beverly Wright.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Wright and I am one of five owners of the condominium that's been discussed, um, by a couple of the previous speakers. It's located at One River Road. My house is House C. Um, the condominium is part of the Silvermine Tavern Village District. And my house, House C, abuts the Lane's project and is the property, uh, that it directly impacts. There've been others that are also describing themselves correctly as impacted, but I, they will, the house that, um, one of the houses that's proposed in the development would be immediately behind my house. Um, I'd like to thank the commissioners and Steve for the time and attention that you've given in your consideration of the project. It has been much appreciated. For my part, I enthusiastically support the Lane's application. I have seen their reverence for the heritage of Silvermine, the energy and effort that they put into developing this plan, and their outreach to the com- community, which has been considerable. The Lane's effort have won the community's approval, I would say by and large, and I hope that they will win yours. Like one of the previous speakers, when I bought this house, I didn't know that buying a condominium, I would also have a neighboring condominium. However, I knew just from research at the time of purchase that something was going to happen. Highly likely something was going to happen on that lot, so I did buy with that awareness. Now, that may not be everyone's situation, and I appreciate the difference. But in, in my case, seeing the reality of that potential development and then seeing it come to potential furition, at least in terms of a proposal, was something that I was very interested in and to see how it was handled. I think it's been handled professionally and transparently. And again, I'm an enthusiastic supporter. So thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to speak regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You click that once, and if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. And once more, uh, raise your hand tool, if you'd like to speak, it's at the bottom of your screen, click that once. I don't see anybody dialing in on the phone.
There is one, Brian.
Ah, in which case you'd hit star nine. Not seeing anyone, uh, Mr. Shawman.
Okay. Then we will, uh, close, uh, the public, uh, uh, comment, um, section of the hearing. And, um, we'll turn it back, uh, to the applicant to respond to, uh, the comments that have been made. And I would, um, suggest that you might, uh, also wish to respond, uh, to, um, uh, the several letters that we received regarding the project.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Shawman. Uh, good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Andy Sumalides. I'm a principal and professional engineer with Lantech out of Westport. Also with me tonight is Peter Lane, um, the applicant and um, owner of these properties or contract purchaser, as well as Andrew Rising from our office and Todd Bryant, the, um, our historian, um, on this project. I'm going to start going through some of the comments that we heard tonight. Um, I think Todd will then address some of the historic aspects and, in regards to the demolition. I'll just pull the plan back up. Um, uh, so there were some questions regarding traffic and drainage and septics and why are we waiving those requirements right now? The reason we're keeping those requirements at this point is because we're not accompanying our text amendment, map amendment with a site plan application. Typically, when you accompany a site plan application with that, that's when you would provide, um, those requirements. This is merely a text and map amendment. Just wanted to reiterate that we would have to come before the commission again, um, in order to, you know, if this goes through and gets approved, we would be back before you folks with a site development plan, which would include, um, drainage and septic and the such. I would argue that traffic is not required, um, especially for single-family residential developments that we're talking about. Um, you folks on the commission, I'm not speaking as a traffic engineer, um, but the intensity of a single-family residence is very low and generates very little trips, um, as they call it, in terms of cars coming in and out of the site. So in terms of a, a traffic generator, um, I would say we would request, ask to waive that request again at the special permit application, honestly, uh, because honestly, as of right, you can get six dwelling units on here. Um, we talked about this potential subdivision. What was submitted was three very large, single-family residences. Um, the idea of this was to show how big of a footprint, what the coverage requirements are, what the setback requirements are, and you could see the massing of these. If you zoom in here and you see the outline of this residence, that's the existing residence at Three River Road. Look at those in comparison to what can be built. Here's the small cottage we're looking to save. And look what you, you can do as a right, as a three lot subdivision. You can also add an accessory dwelling unit. So what does that look like? Well, if you look just to the north, um, the Turners, they have a pretty massive house like you just saw with an accessory dwelling unit. That is as of right. We could do three of these types of units or developments on our pieces of property. We have the acreage. We have the ads of right ability to do that. And as I mentioned before, there is then no oversight from this commission. Uh, we do a three lot subdivision. That three lot subdivision meets the requirements, it gets approved. We then go demo these existing structures and, and start building, um, single-family residential with ADU units. So just to touch on the traffic, we're allowed six. We're asking for six. Um, just some simple math there for you folks. Um, in terms of the drainage, um, there are very well draining soils here. Um, so I, I'm not sure where, who we're impacting, honestly, when we're at the bottom of the watershed here, right? All of this grade goes uphill. If anybody's impacted by drainage, it's us from everybody up gradient of us is drainage draining onto our property. So we have the task of handling the offsite drainage as well as the drainage that we will be, um, that will be made with the additional impervious surfaces with our proposed development. Again, there is a, you know, the city's drainage manual that we have to adhere to, um, as, again, as part of site plan approval, uh, but we are at the bottom of the watershed. All of our runoff goes directly into the river afterwards. The sheet flows across the river and into the river. So in terms of people saying that we're impacting them potentially with drainage, even if our drainage didn't work and we did no drainage, it would not be. It would not be impacting. Some of these neighbors that you heard from tonight and who are concerned about drainage. Water rolls downhill, does not roll uphill. Um, so that water would end up in the river. But again, we'd have to meet the city standards and and we would do that with a safe plan of application. Um, I think there was some mention that. Um, Mr. Lane, when they bought the property, Mr. and Mrs. Lane, they they knew there was a condo association next to them. They did not. They bought the property in two thousand and six. Development next door happened in two thousand and fifteen. Nine years later. And they were full supporters of it. They were very involved with it. They knew what was needed for the community at the time. So they were fully on board with that um proposal. Because there was other things that could potentially go there and they knew that. Um, there was talks about a convention center going there at one point. So. Again, not trying to throw a threat out there that a three lot subdivision and these massive homes can be built there without any oversight, but that's the reality. Um, and and you know, Peter Lane is looking to protect his investment, so. That's that's just the reality of of some facts on the condo's side of it. Um, there was some mention about density. And just to point out, the Turners, this is the Turner's property. This is Mr. Dearie. Who I've known for a long time also and our colleagues, um. And when you go to the site plan approval. This is what his concern is. This is Mr. Dearie. This is the portion that he mentioned earlier about the Nora portion, and here's what we're looking to rebuild. I think he made mention of an existing foundation that was there. There is an existing old historic barn foundation. That the intent is to rebuild, right? Um, and that's what you're seeing here on this plan. You also heard from Ms. Beverly who lives in Unit C. This is Unit C right here. Who's directly abuts um this potential development also. So there was question about density. Um, what you see outlined here in red. This outline here. Is one point two acres. One point two acres on four homes. Is zero point three acres. We have two point one four acres. Take six homes. Divided by two point one four. And it's zero point three five acres. So we're looking for less density than what's next door, or what I would say in kind. We're not asking for more. Those are the facts. I know you heard some things today from from the neighbors, but I just wanna. Spill out some of the facts and 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 how we got here. We didn't say we're just gonna throw six houses on this property. And um and didn't come up with some logic behind it. We didn't say six houses fit. Let's just do six homes. We looked at the development next door. We looked at the surrounding neighborhood. Most of the lots in the neighborhood sit on a third of an acre, which is zero point three three acres. We're looking to do something that's in kind with the neighborhood, that was in kind with what was next door. If Mr. Derry was so supportive of what was next door in terms of density and what that did for the community. And now he knows what the true numbers are of two point one four acres in comparison to one point two acres here. Those numbers match up in terms of density. We're not set using the zero point seven seven acres on the river front. We're talking about two point one four acres within this boundary here. And that's how we did the math and that's how we came up with the density. Um, I think that answered. Who spoke this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to. Mr. Bryant, who can speak a little bit. Um, I think we heard at the last hearing some concern about these how homes are protected and. And we cannot tear them down. Um, so Mr. Bryant will speak to that. I saw Tammy trying to raise her hand. I don't know if she.
Brian, to turn my camera back on here.
Go ahead, Tammy.
There we go.
Brian, just just a moment.
Thank you. My my mouse was a little sticky. I couldn't get to the raise hand thing or I'm muted. Sorry. Um. Andy, could you just please go back to the um your diagram with the houses on it? Um, the one that. Yes. So could you please take your pointer and. Point out first the two existing houses and then. What, as I understand it, the four new houses and then there's a little barn structure as well. So could you please? First, show me the two existing houses on that map.
Sure. So this is the existing residence here at Three River. With a detached garage. This is just the detached garage that's existing that is to remain. And this structure is to remain. This here is the cottage at Five River Road. This structure here, this structure and this structure, as well as the one in the rear here, those are the four new residences. One, two, three, and four.
Okay, great. I had, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Todd. I'm sorry, yeah, for interrupting.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, so in terms of the preservation aspect of this. Uh, the idea of using, and I'm gonna use the term infill, which is uh. You know, kind of, kind of uh preservation speak for uh new construction that's uh in a historic area. Um, and the practice of using sensitive infill. In order to um. Basically finance and protect existing historic structures is uh. Something that's, you know, pretty well-known in the preservation world. It's used a lot. Uh, I would say one of the best examples is probably Sono. Um, where a number of, you know, infill projects have been used. Uh, to kind of reinforce the historic preservation aspect of Washington Street and North and South Main Streets. Some required demolition, which was unfortunate. Uh, but um uh the Pearl is probably the best example of really good infill. That uh it reinforced the preservation of that area. So what Peter's doing here. Is similar to that. And in fact, it's similar also to what Andy Glazer did next door. Infill, using the profits from infill to make sure and the and the protections. That uh a village district. Provide. To preserve the existing historic structures. Not to mention the fact that in good infill, and that's certainly what he has in mind, uh. Reinforces the. Historic nature of the property, not only because of its financing, but because of its aesthetics. And as we've mentioned many times. He's basically using the designs of Norwalk's first female architect. And they're all colonial revival designs which fit into the to the neighborhood. So in terms of preservation, this is a, this is an exceptionally good project.
Commission members have questions? Alright, um, Mr. Sumalides, I'll turn it back to you.
I think I've said my piece. The, I think all those comments also addressed. Um, some of the letters you folks received also, um. Some was in relation to how many trees are coming down. Um. Again, we don't know the answer to some of those questions at the time. Um, so, you know, that those were just some of the questions that came through. Um, I have nothing else to say. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lane. He probably has a couple of closing remarks, but. Again, any technical questions, we're gonna happy to answer it. We do think this is a great project for the area. And we kindly consider your consideration for approval. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I would um jump in. Thanks, Andy and Todd, and just reiterate that um, you know. Uh, with the commission and we've been at this since May, starting with Steve. Uh, with the direction here, um, and I I truly, I think we've done our best to reach out to the neighbors at large. I personally met with at least three dozen. Of our neighbors. I've been to the Silver Mine Community Association meeting. They liked the project a lot. Uh, I've met with members from Nash and they've written letters in support. Um, so I I've I think we've reached out to folks and I understand that, you know, not everybody. Is on board maybe, um, uh, you know, but and I am concerned, you know, I I wanna make sure everybody knows that. You know, we plan to really build a responsible project here that really is in scale with Silver Mine and. And and to rebut, I might say that Andy pointed out. Some of the larger houses around us that, you know, seem to have some issues. I I think we're we're the anti of that, you know, those houses are are probably have the coverage of three or four of these cottages. So eh with impervious surfaces and two and a half stories high, so you know, and that's fine. Um, I I I I it was a lot more coverage as Andy pointed out in the last hearing. I think this is just a different project uh and a good project at scale with Silver Mine. And uh and and I take all the neighbors' comments and we have from the beginning, we actually started with five. Cluster cottages because as Andy stated, that was really the same density as next door. So we even uh pulled back one because we heard, you know, from some of the folks in the community. And uh and we reacted. So I think it's a a great project and I, you know, look forward to everybody's ultimate support hopefully. And thanks for hearing us in your time. Thanks.
I ju- I just have one. Last item in. Uh, Mr. Kleppen staff report. The potential. Language. In terms of item number four. The way this is written out is not necessary, but we don't object. But in terms of item number three here. We want to also include the back half of the market property, which is ten thirty-two Silver Mine ad. So it's no more than six dwelling units on three and five as well as ten thirty-two. Silver Mine ad, that's. And we don't object. To rewriting it that way. I think it's cleaner. Um, I agree. Before it was a little, how many units? What's the math? This just spells it out and it's and it's concrete. Thank you all. Uh, appreciate your time. And look forward to. Hearing your decision.
Okay, with that, unless there are questions, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. Um. What guarantees are? Would there be in this language? Just I I've read it, but I just wanted to reiterate or get us some confirmation. Uh, if this were to be approved um for screening. And was that forty-four hundred figure in the text for the maximum size per dwelling? Forty, is that forty-four hundred square feet?
Correct. So the way the original text was, and we didn't change that, it's forty-four hundred square feet. Of gross interior flooring of that, one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. A minimum of the forty-four hundred, one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet needs to be in the basement. So you're basically, yeah, so you're basically taking forty-four hundred, taking one-one-five-zero out of that. And that's what you can have on one and a half stories. That's the max you can do.
Yeah, cuz that's.
Somebody wants to, yeah, if you do bigger basement, that counts towards the forty-four hundred. So let's say you do a fifteen, you know, fifteen under square foot basement. Now you're left with twenty-nine hundred on one and a half stories above that.
Is that is uh is that in the text? I guess this is just everybody to staff and uh, you know, and the consultants and the applicant. That is, is that spelled out clearly in the text? I I'm sorry if I didn't uh catch that part because the piece you just pulled up. It kind of just went, kind of went, it just had a blank after the forty-four hundred.
Yeah, that cuz that already exists. Uh, Mike, it already is part of the text, so we only included what was being revised.
Right.
So that historically was there, the one and a half stories, forty-four hundred, and of that eleven fifty in the basement was already.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now another question is, um. There's a chance, I mean, there's always a chance that you may find s- some subterranean issues. Where you could only build a maximum of two extra houses or three instead of four. It and and I just wanna make sure that's a. An approval of four houses doesn't mean. Uh, or or let's say of this text because it's not, it's not an application per se, right? It uh it's preliminary application, but. Um, there is a potential that less houses would be the only thing you can build because there might be some. Underground stream or springs or, you know, I guess you do park tests and you would do all the standard. Drainage requirements before you would build, and you know, certainly set with septic, you have to do all that. And it all has to be uh, you know, on the record and and submitted, et cetera. But there is a chance you may not be able to build four houses. Is that correct?
For sure, right? So you have to make sure you meet the city standards on drainage. You make the cities, you know, the the state public health code on septic. And then also, we need to, you know, adhere to. Um, the guise of a village district architect, right? He will have comments and say, you need to work around this and you, you know, and it. Right, so there's, there's all those elements um that we will still need to adhere to during a special permit site plan approval.
Um, okay, I think that uh I I'll wait. I I might have one more question uh before we finish, but I'll let somebody else speak. Uh, thank you.
I have a, Brian, uh, if we approve it uh this evening and it comes before us. Uh, as a project, is it uh uh going to be simply site plan approval? Or would it uh be a special permit?
Be a special permit.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I asked the question because as the commission members know, we have a little more control over what happens. With a special permit than we do with a site plan review.
Ben? Uh, did anybody else wanna go?
Mr. Rowena has his hand up.
Yes, go ahead.
Louis, that question that you just asked was the first of my two. Thank you for that. Uh, my next question is uh for Andy. Um, you presented a um. Uh, like a secondary map that indicated what could do, what could be built there on three lots. And I'm wondering, is the drawing that you submitted as part of this application with the six houses, are those houses to scale? Uh, based on a forty-four hundred square foot maximum?
So what we showed was not a. Forty-four hundred square foot maximum, so I mean. Pull that up. So what you could see here, these homes here.
Yes. No, I'm sorry. Say it again.
These homes here that we did, the gray barns, these are forty-four hundred. Yeah, basements. Um, you know, there's a a garage, the main living space, a first floor master and a couple bedrooms upstairs. So this is a forty-four hundred square foot house. You could see in relation, they're slightly smaller, I would say, um, and that's the idea we wanna go with. Right? In order to get this to fit nicely and and to work with what we're looking to do. Um, again, you see this very smaller cottage barn-like structure back here. This is obviously existing and staying as is. And this is existing with a small potential addition to it. Um, so you're probably looking at something slightly smaller than forty-four hundred on what's shown here.
Is that, and are you planning on coming in with something that looks like this or?
Yes, no, this is what we're looking to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, anybody else? Yeah, I guess, you know, their fear uh is, you know, we approve this and then you come in with. Larger houses, not that I'm implying any motive there. I'm just saying that, you know, that. We're applying, we're approving a preliminary site plan. And that's always tricky, you know, because we're. You had to start somewhere, but. It's not exactly what we're approving tonight. It's it's what, you know, what we're everybody's looking at. So that, I think there's. There might be a little apprehension there, but um. As far as screening goes, uh, the special permit, of course, you know, would would allow us to require it, but it would also. It it's really uh. It's in our regs, uh, and but is there any language? In this text change that uh addresses the screening?
Uh, let me just pull up the existing text.
Yeah, and I should probably know that, but I'm asking it for uh as well for the benefit of everyone listening.
Correct, um.
I think that's a, I, you know, obviously the screening is really important. And, you know, because of the visual impact of what is now woods. Possibly some back lawn area, uh, and. You know, now there's gonna be a house there, so uh I I think everyone would could see the. The logic and the concern about uh the the logic and anyone's concern that is abutting. The logic in anyone's concern that is abutting. Over uh, what they're gonna be looking at.
Yeah, you have complete control over that, honestly, at the special permit level to ask for that. Um. Even if it's not specifically written. In the regs, uh, landscaping is something you can ask for, for sure. We do plant a landscape, uh, next door was heavily landscaped. I know the other, the text as it was written. I think focused on landscaping predominantly for the commercial aspect of it and, and screening of parking. And the such, I don't think there was anything explicitly written for landscaping and screening of single family homes. Um. But, again, we, we wanted, you know, we're, we're looking to do a thoughtful development. And we, we plan to do a robust planting plan. Obviously not part of this, but you will see that at the next level, hopefully. And you can also ask for it. Um. You can ask for it, the, the village architect can ask for it. Anything that could be seen from the public right away. Will be in the village architects' purview, right? I mean, they're gonna have complete. Control over that. You, you guys have seen it and I've personally seen it in the East Norwalk Village District. Um. What, what requirements are required at a special permit with, you know, village district guidelines?
Mister Sumalides, uh, if I may, um. What's your preliminary schedule? When do you think? You might come in eh, if approved. With uh, uh, your request?
Sure, we'd have to, I mean, it'll take a few months to develop. Probably mid twenty-twenty-four. Um, I would envision we'd have to do soil testing. Um, and as such, we'd have to go before conservation most likely, potentially, right? Um, the health department, uh, DPW, get all those nice sign-offs before we come before you, so. Probably a few months to develop site plans, architecturals, and then probably a couple of months of getting some of those initial. Approvals before we come before you, so, you know. All things going right, probably, you know, mid twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, like.
Go ahead.
Question, does that mean that there's a?
Oh, hey, go ahead, Jacob.
I think I'm having a little lag. I might turn my video off just so, uh, hopefully you can hear me.
That's better for you.
Yes. Oh, say it again?
I just say you sounded better.
Oh, good, okay. I, I apologize, my internet is acting up. Um. I wanted to piggyback off that question, um, so it sounds like, um. It may take a few months to, to come back uh, with, with an application if this approves. Um, just from a, like, clerical side of things, I'm, I'm curious. Uh, is this already grandfathered in under the current regulations then, regardless of whether or not the, the new ones pass?
No, so what we're seeking is both. A map amendment and text amendment. So the map amendment. Allows for these properties to be included in the Silvermine Tavern Village District.
Yep.
And the text amendment is just tweaks likely. To um, adhere to what we're proposing.
Understood, sorry. I think I meant for the uh, the special permit. Um, I just didn't know if that was already. Open or in progress?
Oh, no, no, we're not. We have done no work on that. Um, we've spent no effort on that.
Understood. Um, two other quick related uh, unrelated to this, but related to each other questions. Um, on the uh, property that abuts the uh, Silvermine River. Um. Does that, uh, if I recall correctly from our, our prior discussion or from the last meeting. Um, that site is unbuildable uh, as it is. It's not something that could be uh, developed, is that right?
Yeah, it'd be very hard to develop that piece of property.
Okay, and my understanding is that as, as a uh, part of this project, um, y'all are, are looking to. Uh, preserve that and include some like major trails, walking trails, i- is that right?
Correct, there's some that exist. We're looking to, you know, preserve it as open space. We've been talking to the land trust. Um, and, and, and those types of folks and seeing what opportunities there are. We'd like to keep it as natural as possible. Um, potentially take out any invasives and replant with some natives. That sort of thing, but we're trying to keep it, you know. As natural and, and its current condition as possible.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Uh, it, Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um. We got an email today with a letter from the owners of the Silvermine Tavern. And. I, I think I just wanna make it uh, make. I, I don't wanna read the letter into the record, uh, it, it was distributed to the commission. Uh, came in today. At one-ten P M. Uh, but the last line of that letter. Uh. Is from the two owners of the Silvermine Tavern, uh, Lou, Alupus and Scott Kaluski. Who have been, uh, they said own, have owned the Silvermine, I'm sorry, not tavern, market. No wonder, probably everybody's confused what I'm talking about. Sorry, the, uh, the market and, um. They, uh, which is over on Silvermine Avenue, right? And the, the, the proposal includes purchasing. The back portion of that property. Of their property. To include into this. Uh, and so they, uh, I, I'll kind of summarize, but uh, and then read the last line of the uh. Letter to put it into the record. Uh, so they've owned the market for eighteen years. And uh, they. Said, we believe that this project falls in line with the intent of the Silvermine Tavern Village Districts. Which is to protect the continuity of existing historic structures and uses. Supporting this application helps us to continue operating as part of the Silvermine community. So I just wanted to pu- put that into the record because I think that's an important point. It's, it's not simply the preservation of the. Two structures that are there now. Including the one by the. The renovated by the first female architect. Um. In, in Norwalk, but also. Uh, the Silvermine. Market. Which is over on, I was saying tavern earlier, but I meant the market. Uh, over uh, on Silvermine Avenue, which is, uh, you know, a cherished. Part of the community and a historic structure itself. Does anybody wanna address, I mean. Does anyone want to address? That uh, letter uh, before uh, I guess we close this hearing?
Mike, I'd say something about it, uh, once uh, we're in um. Uh, discussion, but not at this point.
Well, what about the, but I can certainly ask the applicant at this point uh, for their uh, the opinion about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Peter? If I can jump in, yeah, I think it's a great point, Mike, that um, has been missed and I think is critical. I think the market um, has been a, one, is one of the institutions of Silvermine, like the tavern and the guild. That connects uh, everybody here in a, in this district, which is three towns. And as we all know in real estate, there's a thing called the highest and best use. And, you know, that market being there for over a hundred years now is such a vital asset here. This, like the tavern project originally. You know, by them being able to do something like this at scale with Silvermine. Helps that market to live on. Um, otherwise. You could imagine what can happen. I mean, it once had multiple barns on the site. And, you know, in that thriving market in New Canaan, it would be. You know, certainly challenged to remain as is, and I think this is a critical part of this application is that this helps that. To stay, it doesn't guarantee it. But, you know, it creates uh, some economics, like the village district, which was originally created for the tavern. It's similar, it creates the economics that help them. Uh, stay there and that use to stay there and, and that structure, so that, that is a big part of this, so thanks.
And, and the letter also mentioned that the barn. For what was called Guthrie's Market before it became the Silvermine Market. Is the. Is the, is that the same foundation that you said you were gonna rebuild?
Yeah, so.
Built upon?
Yeah, thanks to Lee Grant and all the history, the Guthrie's actually owned, uh, one of the Guthrie's owned, uh, Three River at one point as well. And uh, and you can look at the old aerials of the maps, which we've done a lot of homework on, and you can see. The, the barns and the, the trails of, you know, animals and there actually was an ice harvesting business, which I'm fascinated with. Both in the Guthrie Pond down by the tavern and also up at the guild, and so they would drag ice. You know, from both of those ponds and store them in these barns behind Guthrie's Market. So this was a very active. Uh, you know, farming community and then some, and so, uh, and, and that barn foundation is still there, it's in bad shape and not salvageable. Uh, but you can still see the pipes in the ground, which they may have used for this ice business, we're not sure yet. But I think the barn would probably be in that general location and we would rebuild it like a barn, so, so in keeping with the heritage of. Silvermine, per the renderings that we showed in the last meeting, we make it a barn-looking structure, probably out of stone possibly. And we may actually push it a little further from some of the residents to the uh, south. Um, just to give a little space, and I think they probably appreciate that too, but it, yes, it was there and it'll go pretty close to where it was.
Uh, thank you, and then one last que- uh, good, the one last question uh, to staff. Do we ever require uh, an archaeological uh, dig or any archaeological? Uh, inspection? Beforehand, because it's ju- just the conversation that we just had. Uh. You know, it does bring up. The history of this area, but uh. Before construction, would there be any requirement or can we? Uh, it's kind of weird to condition a text change, we wouldn't do that, but I guess at the special permit. Level, we would. Condition that, that's come up recently on some other projects, you know, but. I- is that something that we uh, require in any of our texts anywhere, archaeological? Uh, uh, examination or inspection or, or uh, study?
Not codified in any of our existing regs. Andy or Todd might know. I'm sure once you hit something, if you find something that's of some historical relevance, there's probably a, you know, procedure. That goes through some sort of historic preservation office that would come in and investigate.
Uh, all right, great, thank you. I think I'm, I've run out of uh, questions and I've, I've got some good answers here, thanks.
Okay, then with that, we will close the hearing. And.
You all.
We'll, we'll move on to action.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, like to hear what um, commission members um. Uh, have to say after all of that.
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I have to um, say that. I was against this um, application when it first came on. But I do have to admit that it was a very thoughtful. Uh, presentation, a thoughtful. Uh, utilization of the land. And. Um. It's not without precedent, obviously, that we have allowed these kind of things or permitted these kind of things in an effort to. Preserve historic buildings. So. My inclination um, is gonna be. To vote in favor of this application. But I do wanna say that if I'm still sitting on the commission when the. Special permit application comes in, I hope it looks. Very close to the same as what was presented because. I won't be happy then, if it's not.
Hey, thank you, Richard. Uh, any other comments? Um, I, I, I don't have any uh, um. Significant issues with uh, with the uh, project. Uh, but I uh. Would point out that the um. Uh, Silvermine Store is going to financially benefit. Uh, from uh, this arrangement. So certainly no surprise to me that. They're supportive of the project. Um, and um. Uh, I, 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 I think you can't hear their letter of support without at least keeping that uh, in um, in the back of your mind. Um. Brian, um, we have a resolution, um. You wanna ha- we're gonna handle this in two pieces uh, or a single piece?
I, I, it would, you can hint like under a single app, a single motion.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just find the. Yeah. And then, um. I did include, uh, based on Mr. Sumalides comment under number three. Um, so this highlighted section is that additional address that he had mentioned.
Is that the correct address? Is it Silvermine Avenue? Or is it Silvermine Road? I, I'm just not sure. But I know. All right, why don't, why don't we, why don't we do this? If we approve it. Um. Uh, the staff will. Uh, determine whether it's avenue or road and um. Uh, i- if necessary, make uh, the change.
Is that address technically in New Canaan?
Well, it's Silvermine Road, uh, then it may be. If it's Silvermine Avenue, I believe it's uh, still in Norwalk.
If it's Norwalk. Property, is there a different way we can refer to that parcel?
Yeah, so if it's, if this is like a, a, a New Canaan property, it's probably, probably can even put a regulation in. Specifying it. Um. Just cuz we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over it.
Right, right. All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll leave that to the staff to resolve and um, uh, change if necessary. Um. Uh, any other questions about uh, the resolution?
Yeah, Lou, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I guess this is directed to Brian. Um. It says no more than eleven units, go back to the red. Um. Yes, right there. Eleven single-family dwellings, which may be clustered, and then. Is that including? The existing? Um. Houses, condo houses that are already built in um, Mr. Glazer's property?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, cuz I'm wondering, it's not eleven on these.
Yeah, we're not saying that they can go.
I'm like, wait a minute, I thought we were only talking about a total of six.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I have one more comment, Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
The um. I believe it was the Turner's next door said their driveway is used as a turnaround for the tavern or Gray Barnes. And uh. Because it's the first paved driveway that you come upon as you head north from the, from the Gray Barnes. And I, I could see that being a. A situation, a nuisance. Um. And. It, you know, obviously, uh, the driveway of this property. Is gravel at this point, I believe. And is the intent to keep it gravel, or would you pave a portion, do an apron? Or something that would encourage people to turn around in your driveway instead of your neighbors?
Well, Mike, we can't, we can't ask the applicant. But it is an issue again that we uh, can address as part of the special permit process.
Of course, and I think I was bringing it up more like a rhetorical. Question than an, an official, yes, we wouldn't.
Well, it's good, it's good to remind us all because then at least one of us will remember. When, when we review the special permit request.
Well, I can imagine how annoying it is to have people constantly turning around in your driveway. I know because. I have a wide. Curb cut. The, on my street and it is the turnaround for all the UPS trucks. And FedEx trucks in the neighborhood. Uh, to go back down the street in the other direction uh, here where I live in Golden Hill, South Norwalk, and it is. You can't stop it, but it's just really annoying and, you know, perhaps. Gray Barnes could figure out a way to get people to turn around on their own property. Uh, instead of using the Turner's driveway or anyone's driveway uh, for that purpose. It's something that. You know, may, may not have been an issue or that nobody ever thought of until it was actually a, a plan. So I just. Bring that up in, in the, in the spirit of uh, neighborliness. Um, and uh. You know, and quality of life. So that, that's all.
I have a separate question about um, what staff struck on the maintaining the single ownership, um. Does that impact the ability for this to be a? Condo association where folks can still. Own their property, but maybe. Take bar in a condo, or does this also permit it to be? Single family owned, like wh- wh- what's the, the reasoning or uh, justification for striking that?
Um, let's see. Steve prepared this, so let me just give me a second to. Take a look. Uh, so striking, I mean, it's not gonna prevent them from. condo minimizing, condo minimizing it, um, or having it owned in, uh, separate ownership. So each individual lot sold to an individual owner, um, but it can also be condo minimized. Um, so, um, it might just be in order to give them more flexibility in terms of what they, they choose in terms of how they, they sell each, each parcel or each structure.
Could we look at keeping this in in order to encourage that, uh, ability for ownership and not have these turn into rentals? I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that.
I think it unlikely that they'll become rentals, but, uh, uh, I, 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 I'm not sure I see any harm from what you're suggesting.
I'm not sure if we can reject a special permit on the basis that it's a rental. So that's why I'm curious if we should keep that language in here as part of the regulation.
Brian, do you know why it's been struck?
Um, not off the top of my head, uh.
Why would we care if they're rentals or owned condominiums?
I know we've been talking about, uh, in the rewrite, wanting to have more ability for folks to, you know, have the opportunity to own a, own a home, um, and the infill smaller cluster development, uh, seems like a, a good opportunity for that. That entry point. I, I don't know what the pricing would be on this. Um, but, you know, it seems like more of an opportunity there versus it being a, a rented property.
My guess is it will not be an entry level price point.
Yes.
I think that's.
I, I love, I love the idea that it's an entry point for homeownership. But it's not.
Yeah. I mean, I think the intent behind, the, the original intent behind this language existing in the first place was the promotion of condos.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, as, as far as zoning's ability to, to require ownership versus rental, it really can't, but, um.
Well, that being the case, then let's put that language back.
I don't know how Steve struck this. This is not the usual way to strike a language.
But that, but that's okay. We can ask you to do it after the fact.
All right, works for me.
We understand what, what you're doing. Are there any other questions about the language before we, uh, move on this?
To be clear about the unstriking, we're not going to unstrike the second half of that, the unhighlighted part, right? Uh, just, just the highlighted, striked out part, we're unstriking.
Exactly.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Is there a motion, uh, to, uh, approve, uh, this, uh, as altered? And I'll. Okay. Tammy has moved. Is there a second?
This is Chapin all second.
Oh, well, okay, that's fine. Uh, let's do a roll call vote on this.
I'm just going to edit the effective date, uh, really quick, cause it was set to be effective two days ago.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to confirm, I, I am seated, right? I believe so, but.
Yes, you are, you, uh, you are seated, although now that Richard, uh, is, uh, here, I'll have to seesaw you and, uh, Anna.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking out of turn there. Thanks.
You wouldn't have been speaking out of turn in any case, even if you're not seated, uh, you're, um, uh, fully welcome to participate fully in everything except the vote.
Oh, understood. Sorry. I thought I had to stop before deliberation. That's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, um, a motion to approve the language as amended. Uh, we will start with who I see first, uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Williams?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, approved.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Is approved.
Okay. Let's move on to our, uh, next, uh, public hearing, um. Uh, before I do, uh, we had explained, uh, uh, at our last meeting, when we held the beginning of this public, first public hearing, uh, how we uh, conduct these public hearings, but, um, I think perhaps, uh, for this matter, we should explain it again. Um, the, uh, applicant will, uh, be given an opportunity to explain the project. Uh, during which, uh, the commissioners are free to ask, uh, any questions, uh, they wish. Uh, when, uh, the presentation is completed and, uh, commission members have, uh, asked their questions, we will open it up to the public for public comment. Uh, we simply ask that members of the public identify themselves with their name and their address. Uh, and, uh, uh, ask that, um, they keep their remarks, um, uh, civil. Um, once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, we'll turn it back to the applicant, uh, for, uh, any comments they have and what they've, uh, heard. Uh, I would remind, uh, public members who wish to speak that you only have one opportunity to speak. So that although we encourage you um, to be as brief as possible, you also make sure that, uh, uh, you at least take the time to say everything that you wish to say. Um, because you won't have a second opportunity to speak. Um, once, uh, we have heard, uh, from the, uh, applicant, we will close the public hearing and move on to action. And this is item twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four M. Alex, and I apologize. I should have asked the staff how to pronounce this gentleman's name. Uh, it's Temet Far. For France Street zoning map amendment to change from a B residence zone to neighborhood business, District One, Block seventy-nine, Lot Two. And, uh, I believe Attorney Hall, you are representing the, uh, owner?
Yes, Your Honor, John Hall for the owner. Alex Etamadfar is the way I pronounce his last name. Um, I'm with Muck Join Reimer. It's a law firm located in Norwalk.
Well, um, the ball is now in your court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I'd like to appreciate, like to express my appreciation for the fact that you're all spending your, your volunteer time here tonight. I know it's, uh, I served on several commissions and boards myself, and I know it's a commitment and I appreciate you, uh, donating your time. So I think this is a fairly, uh, simple, uh, application, and I think it's complicated by its long history of, um, of violations, um, which when you open up the, uh, the link in the staff report, it's, uh, it's impressive. You know, it's like a three-page, single-spaced series of, uh, of, um, dates in the violation. But if we just look at the simple, the simple application in and of itself, I think it's pretty clear, uh, clear cut. I'm going to try to share my, my screen. Is that working? Can you see the, uh?
Yes, we.
Google, the Google Earth?
We can.
Okay, great. So this is the, uh, this is the, the property right here. So it's located on France Street, near the corner where the, um, designer is and, and across the street from the mobile. This is the condominium up here with six units. This is a multifamily residence up here with, I believe, five or six units. This is the subject parcel. And this is a, I believe it's a Webster Bank with a commercial use behind it, but it's quite large. Um, so what we're, what we're trying to do is, uh, convert the, the, um, the B residence zone into an, and a neighborhood business zone. So you can see on the staff report that this is the parcel right here. This is the, uh, neighborhood business zone running along here. Uh, so this area here, which is our parcel, would become part of this, uh, neighborhood business zone. Neighborhood business zone, as this picture shows, is, you know, right on, right on Route One. This lot here, off to the right, it's very large, is partially in the neighborhood business zone and also partially in the, in the, um, the B zone. So if you, if you just kind of look at the, look at the property itself, you can see it's kind of surrounded by multiple family or commercial uses, and it's located very close to Route One. Right now we have six units in this structure right here, which is actually kind of a, um, doesn't seem like I can show you the, the street view. It's a very attractive structure. Oh, here we go. Maybe not. Well, I had one ready to show street view, but it's a very attractive structure. It's, it's been, uh, renovated, um, and been kept up over the years. The applicant, Ak- Akbar Etamadfar, uh, bought it in two thousand and fifteen. Um, what he's done now is built a built a, um, structure at the back corner of the lot. So this is the, the survey that you all have. This is France Street. This is the lot in front where the, uh, designer is. This is the house located. It's a large structure. This is an existing structure behind it. This is where Mr. Etamadfar put the garage, um, with the residence unit above it. He put it in a wrong spot. It violates setback. It's too tall. Um, he wants to use it as a residence would be a, um, a violation of the six-unit maximum that he has a pre-existing variance for. And it's just, it's just a, um, kind of was a mistake. What we propose is to switch it to the ND zone, move the, the, uh, structure from here to the proposed garage location here. That would conform to the rear yard setback. Um, it would also conform to height and, and, um, density requirements in the ND zone. Cause that would have seven units and he could have up to twelve. Um, going back to the staff report, if you look at, if you look at these two pictures, in my opinion, the, the, uh, zone change makes sense. If you look at the, the proposed map, it kind of carves out our lot and the abutting lot to the north, I guess. Um, as maintained, you know, a CD one zone instead of joining the pink areas. So in my opinion, it makes kind of more sense to draw the line here. But in any case, it certainly includes our lot. Um, again, as we, as we put in the application narrative, you know, we believe this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in Norwalk, which is trying to achieve higher density living units in a location where they can walk to, uh, business or transportation or, you know, other business related effects. So, you know, essentially being so close to Route One as this is, uh, it just, it just seems to make sense. Uh, it is an interesting aspect of this application that if the new map does go into effect, so let's say you approve the zone change tonight. Uh, if the new map thereafter goes into effect, this property would be, would be down zoned and become a pre-existing non-conforming use as approved tonight, in my opinion. Um, which would restrict its further development in any other direction, like up to twelve units or using, using it, the property of the bank or anything like that. The applicant has no intention of doing that. Um, but, you know, if, if it was, uh, converted to a, a part of the ND zone, uh, that would be his prerogative, uh, as, as uses that are allowed in that zone. Um, so that's an interesting aspect of it. Now, going back to the elephant in the room, the elephant in the room in this case is the, is the violation. And I just have to state, and I'm not looking for any sympathy from the commission or anything like that, but Mr. Etamadfar, I've known him for many, many years. Um, and when I met him, uh, back in, I think it was early twenty twenty-two, he was a different man than I had known previously. And I believe this relates to the the fact that his son was killed in a car accident in May of twenty twenty-one. All of these uh, failures to communicate, the building of the, he's a builder. I mean, the building of the, of the structure, actually where it trobs on the neighborhood, the neighbor's lot, um, is extremely out of character for him. And he's generally a very diligent and attentive uh, builder, and he has a, a decent reputation in Stanford and in Norwalk. And he's, and he's been a good custodian of this property. So not, I'm not looking for any sympathy, but I'm, as a main, as a means, and I found an excuse, but it's a means of explanation as to why, in my opinion, he kind of went off the rails a little bit here. And so what we're trying to do is, uh, remedy the situation with the zone change. I think the zone change makes sense. Once, you know, in, in the, in the context of this application, um, and in the context of the, you know, plan of conservation development that Norwalk has enacted. Um, you know, it does, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me to leave this pocket here, um, which encompasses both our lot and the lot to the north. Um, and again, you know, once this map gets approved, then all of a sudden we're, we're not up zoned, we're down zoned. And, uh, we're kind of, uh, stuck with our pre-existing use at that point. So I think it's a fairly straightforward application. I think it makes sense. It's one lot. It's a hundred feet off Route One. Um, but I do think it seems to be more complicated and more of an ask based on the history and I'm, um, you know, an explanation of that history. I hope you understand that I, I don't think this applicant was really, um, thinking straight. And so I think we're trying to remedy that now. In the draft denial, uh, on the resolution, uh, I just want to point out the fact that in the narrative that I supplied, the draft denial cites chapter four goal one. Preserve and maintain the overall character of traditionals, family and neighborhoods. That's fine. I have no problem with that. Um, but in the, I'm sorry, the draft approval language, it cites chapter four goal one, identify potential markets for downsizing by empty nesters. And aging seniors who want to stay in Norwalk and encourage housing for that matter, uh, for that market. Not exactly sure that's what the intent was, and I don't believe that's what I put in my, in my narrative. Um, I did have a, uh, a section of the P O C D that I cite, but if you look at the, if you look at page seventy-three of, of the plan, you know, it, it basically cites what I cite in the application, which is the, um, the expansion of affordable housing through higher density housing opportunities near employment centers. Uh, and I think that's the purpose of the neighborhood, neighborhood business zone. I think that, that the commission's granting this application would, would serve that purpose. And, and I would ask that the commission grant the, uh, zone change.
Attorney Hall, I have, uh, an entirely different view on this. Um, you can make all the excuses in the world for what was done here. But the fact is this building was put up without permits, without going through any legal process whatsoever. Um, and to boot, part of it is on, uh, a neighboring, uh, property. My view is if we were to approve this, we are encouraging bad behavior. Um, what, uh, uh, this, this gentleman did, um, was, uh, illegal. Um, it was a gross violation uh, of, uh, the regulations because it completely ignored uh, the regulations. Regardless of, uh, his story, he had to know uh, that, uh, there's a process that one has to go through. You don't completely ignore that process. And that's what's, that's what's happened here. And I think, um, that we have to hold people to account. When in effect, they break the law, there's a price to pay. And I think the price here is that building needs to come down. Um, uh, you know, the argument that it adds to the housing stock, it's you're talking about one, one building here. We're talking about one, one building here. We're not talking about any significant um. Uh, improvement in, in the number of uh, uh, houses in uh the city of Norwalk. Um, and um, so I mean, I'll, I'll be, I'm perfectly upfront about this. Uh, I would move the resolution to uh deny. Um, I, I could not in good conscience. Um, uh, uh, allow this to happen.
Um, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I address your comment?
Certainly.
Um, so you're right. It, it did violate the uh, the, the uh. Rules and regulations of the city of Norwalk, but that's why we have attorney overs. Um, you know, sitting on the violation board, and that's why we have uh John Hayducky. Serving as a zoning enforcement officer. So Mr. Edamid Far has already been fined fourteen thousand dollars at this point. He is, there is on the table another fine of fourteen thousand dollars. So that would be twenty-eight thousand dollars. The twenty-eight thousand dollar fine would be the fifth highest fine ever levy against anybody in the city of Norwalk. I mean, this is the mechanism by which we punish people for failure. To abide by our, our permit regulations, our, our use regulations, our zoning. Um, you know, we, we have that mechanism. It's not, it's not the planning and zoning commissions uh. Uh, purview to punish people who violate our, our regulations. Um, it is, I believe, your purview to determine whether or not. Uh, the, the pocket in the new map carving out this lot. Um, as opposed to the um. The other lot. That is adjacent to Route one makes any sense um and does, and does having a lot. In the neighborhood business, adding a lot to the neighborhood business loan, which is so narrow. I mean, it's so narrow. It really is right off, right off the road. Makes sense when all the neighboring uses are multi-family uses, um, you know, consistent with the neighborhood business zone. Um, and if you look at the, if you look at the map, you know, I mean, this, this parcel here. Dominates this landscape and, and yet more than half of that is in the B zone. So, you know, is this use consistent with a neighborhood business use? Um, would it alter the, the neighborhood uh by ask, by adding the single unit? Um, you know, I went to the, to the Google street view. I couldn't even see the building. I couldn't find it. Now granted, the street view has uh trees with leaves on them and perhaps, you know, with a street view with a. Bunch of denuded trees, you know, I, I can see it. Um, but when it's behind the, the um residents. You know, I don't think you're going to be able to see it from across the street, and I don't think people looking at it off of Route one. Would find it, you know, inconsistent with what they expect to see right off of Route one. So I appreciate uh your comments, Mr. Chairman, but I would ask that we leave the, the punishment. To the zoning enforcement mechanism and attorney overs and um. And ask that you, you know, kind of review this. I know it's a big ask. I know, I know it's the elephant in the room. Um, but you know, just, just look at this and see if it's, if it makes sense in the context of the neighborhood business zone to which it's adjacent.
One of the things we've, we've been trying to do. Is add more tools to our toolbox when it comes to dealing with violations and violators. Uh, because uh the, the current system. Um, is not working as efficiently uh as it should. Um, we now have the right, for example, for a contractor's yard. To remove the permit from that contract, a contractor. Um, who consistently violates um the regulations. This is simply another tool. Um, we, we have to uh discourage this sort of illegal activity and. Um, I have. Uh, as I said, no problem with, with uh doing that. Uh, I'm sorry, I interrupted someone.
That's okay. I just wanted to ask Mr. Chairman, uh, this, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, should, uh, should we save our questions or comments until after? Uh, the public speaks or, or should we share them now?
Um, you can do, you can do either or both.
Okay. Um. Um, I wanted to ask, I guess this is an ask of maybe Brian. Um, in the memo, it says that if this was changed to a neighborhood business zone, there could be an additional. Six units on the property. Is that? I assume that's, I'd like to assume that's correct, but is that correct? And is that? How realistic is that with the new regulations, with the parking requirements, et cetera? That this property could be turned into a twelve unit property?
Let me just take a quick look at the map. I mean, so based on, on density wise, uh, the. The neighborhood business compared to the C D three, which is the neighboring zone would, they have, they share the same density, which is the one unit per sixteen fifty of lot area. Um, so it's, you're really just taking the lot area and dividing it by that number. Um, and then based on number of parking spaces, you're looking at if, if the number is twelve. Uh, that would either be a total of sixteen parking spaces required or as few as twelve parking spaces required, which. Uh, I believe they probably, if they don't already have that onsite, they, they would be able to provide it. Um, so I mean, i- if the total number is twelve is based on lot area, th- then it's probably achievable. Um, again, but based on um the proposed zoning map, we've continued to, to keep it within what is currently the. The B residence or the B residence equivalent of the C D one S.
Right.
And uh, this might be more for, for Steve. Um, I know it was mentioned that there's already been fines. I don't know if those were assessed or contingent of fourteen thousand dollars. Um, I've heard anecdotally that sometimes. At the end of all of this, once a zoning violation has been cured. And it seems like this is an attempt to cure a zoning violation um through a map. Amendment that those fines can get or often do get negotiated down by the uh. By the violator or their lawyer. It, is that accurate? What's the likelihood that this fourteen thousand dollars is actually going to get paid?
I, I can address that if you want. So I spoke to John Hayducky today. He said the fourteen thousand dollar fine had been levied. It's in place. He said the second fourteen thousand dollars is contingent.
Okay. Steve, do the fines that have been levied, do those ever get negotiated down or is that?
It, it would be up to the corporation council's department. I mean, they, I, I, I think there's been issues with um. Not through zoning, but with blight fines, which are different statutorily and how they're structured. That they have some like very delinquent ones where they, you know. In lieu of trying to drag stuff out, they've negotiated the price down. I don't know how much and what that impact is, but. It hasn't happened with the zoning ones. So there is the fourteen assessed and the fourteen contingent on this. Um. To be honest with you, it'd be very interesting to see if uh, you know, he's the. If you did look favorably on the application, which, you know, that's, that's necessarily staff's recommendation, but if you did go that route. Um, they still have to come in and pull permits to get, you know, move the building and get everything straightened out. If, if the fine wasn't paid at that point, I might not issue the permit, and whether I can legally do that or not would be another story, but I'll let them challenge me on that one going forward.
Okay. And then I think my last question or comment is trying to imagine, um. You know, we, we're currently in this zoning rewrite process uh with the map, which is kind of interesting because. People can basically request changes to the map without going through this process uh that is happening tonight. They can just send in a comment or a letter saying. We think that this partial should be in this zone for this reason. Um, and, and we look at the map and we adjust the streets, right? Um, if this request had come through that way. With no conversation about the history of the property, just. We're looking at the barrier, we're looking at the boundaries. It doesn't seem to make sense. This should all be pink. Are we cool with that? You know, I'm asking myself hypothetically, if I didn't know about the history of the violations, how would I feel about that? And that's I'm trying to um frame it and. Part of me sort of wants to say, hey, why didn't you guys do it that way? Seems a lot simpler. Um. But those are my thoughts. I'm interested to hear uh from the public or other commissioners as well.
Anna, if I can piggyback off of that, I, I've had a similar thought here of. What, what does this look like if it ends up being zoned, the, the new C D three replacing the C D four? Um. Yeah, and if we didn't know the, the history of the uh, the zoning violations and such. And I, I think I'd be in, in favor of zoning it C D three um. And not changing it to. Neighborhood business and not grandfathering. Um, yeah, as our new regulations include more. Um, requirements and, and more of in line with what we're, what we're looking for uh versus grandfathering in. Uh, something that's violating and has, has variances. Um, I don't know, uh, bring it more into compliance, I guess. It's kind of my rambling thought on, on what you had just mentioned.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting thought experiment, like. Um, I'm not necessarily leaning that way or one way or the other. I think as much as you can try to imagine, what if we didn't know about? All these things that have been going on for years and refusing to stop work when told repeatedly to stop work and all of this stuff. Um. But we do know that. And this does seem to be part of an attempt to cure a violation.
That's not necessarily a bad thing.
Have a comment?
Go ahead, Tammy.
Oh, Mike, go ahead. Thank you, Lou.
Oh, Tammy, you had your hand up. I should have raised my hands. Go ahead.
That's okay. Go ahead. I sometimes don't raise my hand the other way. Go ahead.
Well, the argument that this makes sense to be an N B uh, I, I think is. Is uh not a strong argument at all because it's the uh lot frontage. To me that makes a difference and the lot frontage is on France Street. Which is a street of beautiful historic homes. Many of them have been, been preserved. Uh, this current structure has, you know, hi- a historic look to it. Um, but to say that it, because you look at the map and it has N B on. Other sides of it. Uh, that it makes sense to make this N B. It's, it's not a. Uh, to me, that's not a strong argument because you're, the character does change immediately as soon as you come off. Of, I think that's called North Street there, you know, Route one changes all its, its name there. Um, but uh, you know, Route one basically, and then uh, but the character does change and. I don't, I don't see the, the rationale for making this N beach. Because you're looking at the map with all of the lots you're comparing it to on North Street. Uh, facing uh, or is it North Avenue? Whatever, doesn't matter. Uh, the um. They're all, all of their frontage and access is on the uh main artery of Route one. And uh, and this is not. And so uh, this came up. In, if you all recall, the Cumberland Farms. Uh, and, and I'm not even going to talk about the violation right there. The second, I'm just talking about in terms of any rationale to make this N B. As you recall, up, over on uh Main Avenue and Main Street, it was, I think, believe that was the corner of Main Avenue and Main Street, which was a bit funny. But um, that was going to be, there, there was a zone change request for neighborhood business to extend into. Uh, up on, you know, up into the historic neighborhood where all that historic preservation was happening. And uh, uh, and, and that was denied by this commission because of the impact it would have. On the neighboring residences and, and so uh, that, that aside, and you know. The, the lawyer spoke of the fact that you can't see this. Well, that's exactly why this owner did this. Because he thought he could get away with it. It's basically what happened, what it was. He said, oh, nobody's going to see it from the street. I'm just going to put up this other unit back here. It should not be rewarded. I, I. I agree with Lou Scholman on this. This is not a precedent we want to set in Norwalk. Just tell developer, you could build up, you could build an illegal building. And then come back retroactively and say, you know, I have some personal issues or whatever. And uh, I want to be rewarded with a zone change. Uh, so I don't think the zone change makes sense. Based on what I just said, and I don't, certainly don't think uh. This kind of behavior should be rewarded. I mean, it's a screw. It's not even like, I mean, it's, it's a major violation.
I concur, Mike.
Tammy?
Okay, um, thank you, Lou. I just wanted to ask Mr. Hall, um. If you communicated with the neighborhood number eight France Street. Because that is a multi-family residence, three family and I. You go ahead and answer that and then I sort of have another question.
This is the one to the north of us?
Yes, number eight.
I did, well, I, I sent him the notice, but I didn't, I didn't call the neighbors to get their opinions or anything, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then this is more for the commission. And I'm, I'm not condoning people putting up illegal structures on their properties. I think that creates a lot of problems. Just a comment to note that the Norwalk Land Trust actually owns a little oasis of. Completely landlocked property, sort of two parcels to the north of the bank property. So there's this tiny little oasis of land trust land there. And then I took out the old map, the, uh, the zoning maps that Steve and Brian gave us initially. And we spent a lot of time looking at where the lines went and oddly enough, I don't mind if that line went in one, but um. Because it is already, there are two multi-family houses there, but I would. That wouldn't sway me to um, you know, approve something that was done illegally. Just two little thoughts to ponder.
Can I just ask the permission, a question and, and I'm, I'm not going to take a, a head count, but I was just wondering, had there been no violation? Had this just been a, you know, coming to the zone change, asking to build this structure behind me, the other one. Would your attitude be different? I'm, I'm hearing it would.
Well, that's what I was wondering about and you can't say for sure, but I think Mike made a good point in terms of the frontage on France Street. I'm not sure that it would have been different. I'm sorry, Darius.
Well, also it seems that there's been a, a reduction in grain space on this property as well.
I agree with you, Darius, but I would say, think about those projects up on East Avenue, um, the one, the carriage building, what was it called? Um, next to the funeral home or the one on Stevens Street where they added massively off the back. It's similar and they also did it further down on um North Street and the corner of Knight Street. Uh, I believe Knight, right? We just, that was an application we looked at about a year ago. Um. High Street, sorry, the corner of High Street and North Avenue. It's exactly what we're looking for. Um, there's a lot of tar on this property, but it is a nice looking colonial structure. I agree with Mike. The rest of France Street actually has some really beautiful older houses. Some are in better repair than others. And then, you know, you get to Route one and you have the gas station and the auto repair shop, you know, it's sort of ugly, but. It does kind of fit the bill of what we're trying to accomplish in this quirky little spot. And the condominiums across the street, they're a tough sell because they back up to a gas station.
I did share the um, the Google street view from two thousand nine. I, I, we have not reduced the green space on this property. Um, in fact, it's, you know, it's flourishing. As it was then, but just, just a small, I don't think that's going to carry the day.
Are you, are you suggesting that where the garage was built uh was not, was previously developed or paved?
Oh, I don't know. I, I don't, I think it was, I think it was just a. Oh, I don't know. I I don't, I think it was, I think it was just a lot without anything there, but I don't know that for, I don't know that for certain. And and unfortunately, I can't get a history from Google unless it's Street View um, but actually, maybe I can.
Or where you're proposing to move the garage should.
Yeah, I I don't know. It's difficult to see, but I don't, I don't think there was anything back there. It might have been. But like I said, I, I don't think the um, the absence of a view. Like a street is gonna sway the commission's opinion in this regard um is my, is my general sense.
Yeah, we don't need to go down a rabbit hole on it.
Are there, are there other questions from uh commission members or comments? If not, uh Attorney Hall. Have you finished your presentation? Should, is it time to open it to the public?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's, let's do that. I'm looking, oh, Brian, you want to explain to people uh how they can uh uh access the uh hearing?
Sure. So for members of the public, if you'd like to speak on this application, you could use the raise your hand tool. You click that once, it's at the bottom of your screen, and if you're, if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine.
See, this is the silent majority that favors the application.
Just one more time, the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen. Click that once. Not seeing anyone, Mr. Schulman.
Okay, um, then we will uh turn it back to uh Attorney Hall for um his closing comments.
I have no further comments, Mr. Chairman. I I think it's pretty clear of where this is going. I appreciate the board's attention to it. Um I do, I do feel that the violation has been addressed um adequately by the. By the zoning enforcement mechanism we have. But if this commission feels that it's important to have um additional. Uh enforcement mechanisms in its tool belt, so to speak, then, you know, I I leave it to the commission to determine its own authority in that regard.
You know, I don't, uh Attorney Hall, I I I I don't, I don't do any development. But uh it seems to me if I were putting up a a building. Um, the fees involved. Might well be more than um uh the uh penalty fees that the city is. Uh attempting to impose here.
I I don't believe that's accurate, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think this is just a huge. Mistake on this guy's part and 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 inexcusable and and inexp- inexplicable. I mean, you know, you you had, you are surrounded by, by, you know, there's no hiding this. You know, I live in Wilton. I live, I live, uh my property is adjacent to Allen's Meadow. You know, I could, I could almost do anything. I could put the Empire State Building back there and hardly anybody would notice. This is, this is one block off Route one. This is a bit, France Street is a busy street. It's busy enough that there's actually police. You know, that sit on it to pull over speeders because of the the school and and the church location. So, you know, there was no doubt in my mind that this was just a, a bad move. No, no evil intent, no trying to avoid, you know, the the application fee or anything like that. Um, you know, which I believe would have been nominal. The fourteen thousand, possibly twenty eight, much greater. Fees than the, than the city of Norwalk would have uh imposed under this, you know, for this. The building, you know, it's the value of the, of the construction and the value, um you know, the additional tax assessment, maybe. Those are nominal. This was not a, this was not a smart move. It is unnecessary to use. This application as an enforcement mechanism to, as a warning to others. I don't think anybody else would do this. Um and I don't think this guy was in his right mind when he did it, but, you know, it is what it is and and you guys are very much aware of it. And like I said, it's three pages of single spaced dated, dated hearings on the violation. It's just you, it's very difficult to ignore. I understand that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick question for Attorney Hall.
Sure, go ahead.
Did your client um do the renovations on the existing building? The main building?
I don't know, uh, Mr. Ruina.
How long has he owned it?
He's owned it since two thousand fifteen, and when I went back in the history, it looks like the, at least externally, the building looks the same. You know, you can, you can see this, this is the uh. The street view, if you go back to oh nine, you know, it doesn't, it hasn't really changed. Am I still sharing? No, I'm not still.
No, not at the moment.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the oh nine. And that's today. So, you know, there's really, there's not a lot of, of significant alterations going on, at least externally. I have to say, the share screen thing is is a. Very useful. But that's the oh nine. That's today, you know, I I I, to my knowledge, you probably got, I, you probably got the permit. I don't know. You know, for the, I don't know what he did inside. You know, I just, I just came on board, you know, a few months ago trying to. Dig him out of the mess he got himself into.
Like to add a comment, I, I don't. I think I agree with you. That. This shouldn't be an enforcement. Mechanism, right? But the enforcement mechanism is the fine. And the stop work order. And then. You gotta try to cure the violation and your options are to take it down, which is what he was told to do. Or get the zone changed. And that's where I feel like. Changing the zone as a way to cure a violation. Is not a, is not. Appropriate. I don't think it's, it's refusing to change a zone as a way to enforce against bad actors. Just that if there's a zoning violation, um it's not the case that. The map itself was flawed and it never made sense for it to be the way it was. Yeah, so I just wanted to to throw out that.
Steve, um, does the staff have a position on this?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we, there was a lot of detail in the memo outlining that kind of the history. I mean, I've been doing this. For over twenty years now. I've, I've, when I first started in Stanford, there was. An individual actually built an entire single family house without a permit, and part of that was on a neighbor's property. That was a complete disaster. In terms of construction without permits, this ranks right up there. I I mean, I, look, I I I would never want to put myself in in the applicant's shoes in terms of his loss and how that impacted him. I can't get into his head to see how that affected his judgment, but I can tell you, it was. I I'm, I'm very happy that Mr. Hall got it, Attorney Hall got involved because we got, actually got to the point of an application. I think we were strung along for at least four to six months. On getting an actual person that was competent enough to take this on and and get it to an application stage. He did get to Z B A and ended up withdrawing because E B A was, you know, giving all indications they were not going to approve the variance, so. I think there's a high level of frustration with staff at the egregiousness of what work occurred. Um, and from our perspective, we got, you know, we tried to go through the injunction process through the courts. That was very frustrating because the the judge was not well versed in land use and really. Didn't really, I don't think, figured out what was going on with setbacks and why do we need setbacks? I wish I never thought was the, the point of what the judge should be looking at. But I think there's just a general level of frustration on our part that this has just been ignored and kicked down the road with lots of promises to. Get stuff done and submit paperwork and file applications and until we got to this point. So I think that's part of, you know, where we stand.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment about Mr. Cleffin's comments? If nothing else, I.
We haven't closed the hearing, so yes.
Nothing else, I got a compliment from Steve Cleffin, so if that, if I get nothing else tonight, I got that.
And I, I would like to add. The attorney said, uh, Mr. Hall said it was inexplicable. Perhaps. But I find it quite explicable, if that's a word. If something's inexplicable, I guess something is explicable or explainable, but it's greed. Because if it's two thousand a month rent, let's say. It's twenty four thousand dollars a year. That's two hundred and forty thousand dollars over ten years. That's the kind of math that would drive somebody to put another unit back on the edge of the property. And think nobody would see it. And to me, that's, that's ex- quite explicable. And that's the kind of behavior that is just. You know, the, I mean, I. I don't think this deserves to be neighborhood business, even if there was this violation. And was not this violation here. So I think that, that, that's where I stand. But but I don't think that it's inexplicable. I think that's quite clear to everyone.
Steve and then Chapin?
Sure, I'll be very quick. Um, you know, what I didn't hear it mentioned, I I think staff does have an overarching concern. Um regardless of the location of the structure, that this location will be used for business purposes post whatever approval. The way that first floor was constructed, the way that height of the garage is built, it's not. It's, it's much larger than what anybody would build for a conventional um dwelling unit. And I think the the business address for the property is actually, for the applicant's business is actually this address, which was, you know. Contracting in general, so I don't think, I I, that's our longer term concern with this.
Chapin?
Yeah, so if this was a zoning map amendment, um like what, what we saw earlier tonight or. Previously where they come to us with like, hey, here's what we're thinking, but, you know, initially, we'd like to propose this, this map change and text change possibly. Um, I don't know that a a garage with one dwelling unit would um like raise to the, the level of, you know, what we'd want to. To move for um. Adding it to the neighborhood business unit um uh zone. You know, I'm still unsure about the C D three, but I think as indicated previously, that can be a separate discussion. You know, that doesn't need to be part of this decision. Um, I I just wanted to kind of layer that on there that, you know, if this was just a, a proposal of coming to us asking like, hey, like, I'd like to. Add a, a single garage and, you know, one um. Unit to the site, um and therefore would like to have this be the neighborhood business zone. I, I, I don't think this is something I would, I would go for. I want to see a, a different type of uh application that'd be more applicable to, to enabling that zone.
Richard?
Yeah, I was just gonna pile on a little bit myself um and and give Mr. Hall. Um, another compliment. Um, as, as a land use attorney uh for fifty years. Um, I've run into John Hall a number of times and I've always respected his. Um, ability to um look at these kind of problems and come up with. Pretty unique and unusual solutions many times, so I was really looking forward to hear what it was gonna be tonight. Especially after reading that three pages. Um, and. He was right, you know, it was a complicated. Set of violations, but a very simple application. Um, and you know, I. John, I'm gonna vote against you, but not because you didn't do a great job. I mean, it was really a good presentation. The, the violations are horrendous.
Let's uh move on. Um, is there a motion to deny?
And Lou, before anyone makes any motions, uh I just want to confirm that.
Thank, thank you, uh, uh, Brian. Um, Anna was unable to vote on the last item, so uh I'll seat Ida, uh, seat Anna. Uh, and um will, with, for uh the next item, we'll, we'll see Chapin. Thank you, Brian. Uh, back to the question, is there a uh motion to deny?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, uh.
I'll second.
Has moved and Darius has uh seconded. Um, any further comments? Richard? Oh, you, you're just still.
Sorry.
That's okay.
There was nobody from the public that wanted to say anything? Just double checking?
Yes, there was no one.
Okay.
There was, there was one comment filed, but the woman lived over on Pillow Street.
Oh, right, thank you. I I meant here this evening alive, sorry.
Okay, um, we have a motion. We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, let's do a roll call. We're voting on a motion to uh deny the uh request. Um, for a zoning map uh amendment.
Here, I'll, I'll, I'll do it. Uh, let's see here. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
I guess I'll abstain. I understand what everybody's saying, and these viol- violations are terrible, but it seems. I have a certain amount of sympathy for the situation, and I find the, if he has to take the building down, that's pretty harsh. So I will abstain.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
All right, it is denied.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Hall.
Thank you for your attention to all the commission members. I appreciate it.
Okay, um. Uh, it is eight thirteen. Uh, Mr. Pam, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pop, uh, are you prepared to present?
And good evening, Matthew Pop. Um, Wilder Gleason is at a Darian. Uh, meeting, and we were wondering if we could just skip down um to maybe the next one or one after until he gets back, if not.
No, we'll, we'll simply leave you then. Uh, you, you let me know uh when uh he returns and um. We'll take it as soon thereafter as we're able.
His name should pop up on the screen, so, very good. So keep, keep in touch. Thank you. Will we be taking up building and facilities?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, the eight twenty, eight twenty-four is next, I mean, the special appropriation is next.
That's right. Twenty twenty-three dash sixty-seven S A, Building and Facilities Department Special Appropriation Request. For fourteen million, three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Relating to Connecticut State H VAC School Grant Application. Report and Recommended Action, I think. Um, I saw, ah, Mr. Lowe.
Uh, good evening, um, members of, excuse me, National Commission. Um, I'm Alan Lowe on behalf of the City of Norwalk. Uh, making a special appropriation request. Um, this request unusual from a financial perspective. Because it's like fourteen million dollars, but from a um facility perspective and the obligation to say. To what, to maintain and and repair our facilities, in this case, a school building, it's fundamentally what we need to do. So, and also, at the same time, we are always asked to look for uh money from other places besides city funds to do improvement projects. So what's in front of you tonight is that um, there's six projects from both education, uh school construction. Project that we're looking to apply for applications, six separate projects. Uh, they're not grouped together as one because state doesn't look at the whole package. They look at individual projects. So we have six project they're seeking state money for. Little bit about the reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. Uh, the city traditionally gets about thirty-three percent for, for. Uh the city traditionally gets about thirty three percent for for renovation projects. And for new construction, it's twenty two, twenty three percent. Uh last year, this uh for a special uh legislation, the city's reimbursable rate went up to sixty percent. So again, this is a substantial increase from what we typically get in past years. Um, one of one of the condition in terms of reimbursement uh money from the state is that the state does not reimburse the city for repair and replacement. So when you have a boiler failure, you want to replace a boiler, that's not reimbursable. Uh you want to fix a rooftop unit, that's not replaced uh reimbursable. So it's really only new building construction, major renovations, as well as like environmental remediation, roofing, windows. And I think that maybe a couple of minor items that's eligible for state reimbursement. Um, so what we're looking at here is that uh last year, the state has multimillion dollar set aside for this special grant process. Sure. H P C means uh heating, air conditioning, and ventilation. Um. They have multimillion aside for this grant application, but because the criteria, the grant is very complicated and difficult to achieve within a short timeframe, uh the state put up this grant process, but yet did not receive and did not approve a lot of projects because uh it was just too complicated and too short of time. So they were scheduled to reissue this September a couple of months ago. Uh in anticipation of that, city and myself uh we actually started in May of this year, start looking three, basically, there's three or four requirements of part of grant application. One is that the city has to have the design, uh conceptual design ready. We have to get professional cost estimates. We also had to allocate the city share the funding and and under these grant would be forty percent of funding. And the deadline for submission is end of December. So starting in May, we ended up went out and and issue our people engineering design services. And after that, we did cost estimating. And at this point, we are going through the special appropriation process. So the amount that we requesting is substantial. Again, it's about fourteen million dollars. The total combined of six projects, thirty five million dollars. And I mean, I'm not anticipating the state to fund all the six projects, but it's we are looking to submit all these six projects. Um, these projects, um again, typically, we don't get reimbursement from the state. And these are project that the Board of Education will be submitting to the city for next five years. So in a way, we are trying to get ahead of it and potentially get sixty percent reimbursement instead of just city paying for all these projects on its own. Um, the project, let me just bear with me for a second here. The the six project include Brian McMahon High School, uh Brookside School, Marvin Silvermine, Rowington, and now make. Uh, there's a detailed information in your package about what we're looking to do in each of this building, the projected cost and the state share. It's all in the backup packages. Uh, one thing I want to note is that uh Brian McMahon, Brookside, Marvin, and Silvermine, it's all existing equipment that we're looking to replace. And these projects expected to be coming to the city for uh for requesting funding for next five years. Rowway and now makes a little bit different. Uh we are asking to install air conditioning in those two buildings. Uh, these are century air conditioning uh instead of like we in we in recent years, the board has been requesting air conditioning project for schools, but those are really like window units and split units. So it's it's not for air conditioning projects. So for Rowway and now, maybe we're looking at full A C for the entire building, uh uh mostly centralized system kind of thing. Um. So again, total total is about thirty five, thirty six million dollars, and the city should be fourteen million dollars. So in terms of funding wise, uh we had gone for board estimates and all board estimates has recommended approval of the funding. And one of the things I mentioned to the board of uh board board estimate was that the state is going to potentially fund cup few of these projects, probably not all of them. The same time is my uh my my conversation with board estimate was that in the the project that would does does not get funding, uh we will probably return the funding back to the city so that we we will not be kind of tapping into the money because at forty percent, we will not be able to do that those project anyway. So those projects would fall back to our regular capital budget process and compete with other city projects along the way as every capital budget process every year. So that is being requested uh to the planning and selling for consideration. Uh, excuse me, um to uh to uh approve the special appropriations as matching funds to the grant application that we intend to submit to the state by end of this year. So I think that's basically summed it up. Um, if you have any question for me.
Alan, um the uh very substantial rehabilitation of Brian McMahon wasn't done that long ago, and I'm wondering why it's uh uh necessary uh at this point.
To Brian McMahon High School was was designed around two thousand and three. So it's complete, it was quite completed, it's like thirty six month of construction, it's about two thousand five, six or so kind of thing. Um, so it's about almost twenty years already. Uh, it's very interesting. I mean, I think traditionally, when we look at building with technology and stuff like that, you know, we always talk about boiler. Again, boiler is like, you know, traditional boiler, you know, we last twenty five years. Sometimes you get thirty, thirty five years of them. Taste technology system doesn't last as long. It's getting much more complicated. The technology changes in the ability to maintain equipment even harder. Um, Brian McMahon, when it was designed and built, there was one chiller in the building, and there was no backup. So it's the system is failing now. The equipment is failing now. There was an emergency temporary uh air conditioning unit was was born into the building uh uh to just maintain the building for a little bit, and they did some repair. Um, what's in front of us is two things. One is that we're going to replace existing air can sit air can um chiller unit and also install a spare unit so that there's backup. The second piece of this is that the athletic wing, uh the gym and also secondary spaces around the gym is never air conditioned, and Brian McMahon is considered an emergency shelter. So we want to take this opportunity to 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 approach the state to to do both of those items together. It's a substantial cost of about eight million dollars to do both. Uh, so it's interesting because equipment, air conditioning equipment, after twenty years, we are looking to repair and replacement. So like, again, this is a challenge if otherwise, we'd be coming to the city for eight million. We we may not do the air conditioning for the um if we don't, if we don't get a grant from the state, we may continue to hold off on the gym area, but we still have to do the air conditioning unit, the chiller unit for the for the overall building. But taking looking at this opportunity that we applied for both both uh both tasks.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Alan? If.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Chapin.
Very quick. Uh, I I'm excited to see the the use of uh uh heat pumps and and several of these, another high efficiency um heating and cooling. Um, I was a bit disappointed to see new oil and natural gas burners going in. I know the city is looking to to be more green. I I don't know if you had any uh comments on those specifics and uh you know why we chose uh oil and natural gas for uh some of those boilers.
Uh to ask to address a question, I think, no, I think um for all our new complete renovation project like South North School, Noah High School, um Cranberry School and Jefferson School. Those schools are all designed with heat pumps, and then by eighty percent of the building is actually electrical base. Uh, there's certain area like gyms and and auditorium and stuff like that. Electrical, heating and cooling is not as efficient as gas, and the equipments are um are more centralized. So so that's why there's twenty percent of this, it's of the building, it's actually still on gas. Uh, but eighty percent of electric, of most, generally speaking, eighty percent of building electric. We will come down to these project. We are not replacing the system. We are placing the rooftop units. We are replacing the chiller. So whatever system that the building has will continue. So these are just re- equipment replacement, not system replacement.
Okay, thank you.
But Alan, couldn't couldn't you do at this time potentially do a larger replacement? There's something more efficient, you know, for getting such a reimbursement rate. Wouldn't this be an opportune time to do something like that?
Yeah, when we replace this equipment, it's going to be the most efficient equipment we could get as a replacement. So like a rooftop unit. For the let's say, heating wise, they were, let's say, before it's I don't know, making it up here, right? Eighty percent, eighty five percent efficiency. So whatever we're gonna put in here is the next level energy with this, this we the the heat recovering systems and other things being put in as part of these packages. So these, whatever we're gonna put in, it is gonna be more efficient than what we had in the past.
Sure, but couldn't it have been an opportunity to potentially move away from some of these natural gas and oil options?
It's not so simple. The reason being.
Of course not.
Right? If this if there's six units on a roof, because two million dollars to do just replacing it, you want to change a system. You gotta go change all the electrical. You got to do upgrade entire building electrical. You got to take the building offline for a long time and on and on. So it's it's not, it's this, this is not those projects. These are really equipment replacement. Uh, again, we're gonna find the most efficient equipment that we can get to replace these, but same time, it's overall system. Let's just say you want to design geothermal. Well, you got to redo the entire building. That's a major, that's a potentially a twenty five million dollar uh per building kind of thing. I'm making it up here again. So it's not a three million dollar, four million dollar project. So it's a it's as big as these number looks like in terms of construction and equipment wise, it's a it's a these are somewhat small in terms of uh, you know, over getting the building and do something totally different.
Other questions for Alan? All right, if not, uh we have a resolution. You make that a little, thank you.
Mister Chairman, who's seated for this?
Uh, uh for this one, it's um uh going to be uh Chapin.
Thanks.
Motion, is there a motion to approve? Uh, it looks like Mike had his hand up. Uh, is there a second? Uh, Galen's, I saw, the only hand I saw was Galen's. Uh, all right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Um, all right, uh, let's do a roll call.
Right, let's see. Uh, Miss Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mister Williams?
Yes.
Mister Bryce?
Yes.
Miss Wells?
Yes.
Miss Langallis?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Mister Muschak?
Yes.
Mister Kanter?
No.
And Mister Schulman?
Yes.
It is passed.
Okay, um, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Um, the uh next item, and I I I I again, we're gonna see seesaw back and forth. Uh, Anna will be uh seated uh for this. Um, five dash twenty S P R uh number oh seven dash twenty CAM and six dash twenty S P R slash number eight dash twenty CAM Wall Street Recap Associates LLC Municipal Holdings. Um, Second Garden Development Limited Partnership, sixty one Wall Street and seventeen Isaac Streets. Uh, request for a one year extension. Um. Attorney Klein, um, you representing the applicant?
I am, yes, thanks, Mister Chairman. Good evening, everyone. How's how's I hope everyone's doing well. Um, I'll be brief. I know it's been a uh a busy night, and then you have a couple of busy agendas coming up in December. Um, we're here uh just for, as you mentioned, a one year extension on the uh 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 Wall Street project. Uh, we have made progress on the site uh uh including the completion of the demolition at seventeen Isaac Street. Um, and we're hoping to have our financing secured uh to, you know, pull the building permit and continue site activity uh in early twenty twenty four. Uh, the problem is, is that this uh your approval expires uh very early in in twenty twenty four on in early January. So one year extension will will, you know, provide us that extra cushion to secure our financing, obtain the building permit and and go ahead with uh uh delivering this uh this important project. So we hope that you'll uh grant this extension request.
Okay. A motion to um provide a one year extension?
I'll make the motion, Lou.
Okay, Tammy has made the motion. Is there a second?
Quickly, for a second, um, we're gonna do two separate resolutions on this one.
One on each building?
Right, yeah.
This first one will be sixty one Wall Street. Um, and uh I'm looking for a second. Tammy has uh moved and Richard has seconded. Uh, let's do this with a show of hands. Uh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Um. Looks like uh Anna? Oh, okay. Looks like it's unanimous. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, the second one is for seventeen Isaacs uh Street. Uh, former location of our favorite movie theater. Motion to approve. Richard uh has moved. Is there a second? And Mike has seconded. Uh, again, any discussion?
See. Lou, that theater had the smallest bathrooms I've ever seen. And it was completely ADA unaccess- inaccessible. It was inexplicable.
Thank you, Mike.
The word of the day.
Uh, okay, again, let's uh let's do it with a show of hands. This time Chapin is uh seated. All those in favor? Uh, once again, it is uh unanimous.
Great. Hey, thanks so much, everyone. I hope you all have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you. We look forward to seeing this project finally moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um. Next item, twenty twenty three dash sixty two CAM Gleason and Associates LLC. One Cudlet Street, uh construct a new two-story addition approximately thirteen hundred square feet in size to the side of an existing single-family residence.
Good evening, everyone. Wilder Gleason of Gleason and Associates. I represent um Maura Benani and Robert uh Coonahan, who bought this property. Um, Brian, would it be possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to, Mister Gleason.
Okay, let me. Okay, um, we're here for CAM approval for a a proposed addition. Um, this is a survey that was submitted. It shows the existing property with the house here.
I'm sorry, Mister Gleason, can you blow that up for us?
Uh, yeah, I believe I can. How's that?
Oh, that's a bunch better.
I I think I've got something better too, but um, let me see, I'll try and do it one more time, see if we can. There, okay. So the existing house is here, and there's a pool behind it. And this is the proposed addition. And what happened is during COVID, Maura and Bobby wound up working from home. And Maura is working a hundred percent from home. And Bobby works two days a week uh from home, and they have four little kids, six and un- uh and younger with a nanny, and they really need separate space. The driving concern was the office space. And they've they're creating a family room. We went to the Z B A, uh well, the uh when they bought the property, uh and the addition here is supposed to be thirteen six from the property line here. And there's an elevated terrace that's eleven feet. And then there's a stairway that's thirteen point one feet, I believe, away. Um, the wetlands line is here. I'm sorry, this is the this is, yeah, uh, the wetlands line is here. And there's a coastal jurisdiction line that is simultaneous with the wetlands here, but. And there's a coastal jurisdiction line that is simultaneous with the wetlands here, but there's a slight difference down in here. Um, the property is served by a dock for which they got permits a long time ago, a couple of years ago. And, um, when they bought the property in, uh, uh, and, and we had to get variances to, um, to, uh, from the ZBA. And as part of that, the ZBA forced us initially, we're seeking to intrude more into the front yard setback. And the ZBA said, no, you have to push back towards the wetlands and shrink this and do a bunch of other stuff. And oh, by the way, we also merged our separate buildable lot over here into, or we're going to merge it if we get your approval. Um, so that we will have a single lot that is three times the minimum lot size. So we've given up the right to build on this property in order to proceed with this addition. Um, but, uh, let me just shrink this down and we'll go to, um. So. So this, these are pictures that were taken when we bought, when the Bonnies first, uh, when Maura and Bobby bought the property. And this is the garage and the shed that were on the property at the time. And you can see that this area was mowed and there appears to be an area for a dock, which was in the back. And there's a, there was a boathouse shown, you'll see that on the next slide, but see the fragmites that it, uh, were all over the vacant lot and in a portion of the back property. And this is Maura shortly after they bought. Removing the fragmites. She's treating them appropriately according to DEEP permits. And she did this for, I think, a couple of years and eventually eradicated them. This is a survey from nineteen eighty eight that showed that we found in the land records. It's map number ten seven seventy three. And it shows the configuration of the property back in nineteen eighty eight. Here's the house. Here's the dra- gravel driveway with a turnaround around that garage that you saw and the shed. So all of this was utilized and you can see there's a dock back in eighty eight. So all of this was utilized and mowed, uh, back in eighty eight is what I surmise from this. Um, what has happened since then is the, the fragmites were eradicated and this is the vacant lot looking from the back of the house yard towards the vacant lot. And over a series of years with planting thousands and thousands of plugs, fragmites have been removed and we've, they've been replaced with Spartina and Patens and other saltwater tolerant species. So we have a thriving wetland where none exists before. And this was done all by the applicants without any help from neighbors or something else. But in fact, what they did is they talked to their neighbors because if you've got a field of fragmites, uh, you clean it up and your next door neighbor has fragmites, you're going to get them. So they convinced the neighbors to treat the fragmites as well. And then as part of that application, they supplemented the neighbors. They provided plants and plugs to the neighbors. So the neighbors have created wetlands on their adjacent properties on either side. And this is the, the view from the back looking at the wetlands that have been restored. And that is, I think, an alliantis tree, which I think our landscape architect, Mark, Matt Pop will talk about. We're going to remove that because it's, uh, a host for the spotted lanternfly, which is a noxious invasive species that is of great concern. Exhibit C two here is, I'm sorry, is a picture of from the backyard looking at the house. This is the rear of the house. The addition's going to be over here. We're going to have to remove this tree. Um, but everything else will stay. And you can see the wetlands are pretty visible in terms of what's visible, even though it's being mowed. And the lawn, which is in the upland, is pretty clearly marked. This is the pavers that were allowed by DEP to, uh, be installed to access the dock that we got the permits for re- recently. So, um. Here's a blow up, a more, a, a, a better blow up that shows the setbacks. Thirteen six from the corner. We had originally proposed to put the addition a half foot further away from the wetlands and the ZBA pushed us back. And we're eleven feet from the wetlands with our elevated terrace and thirteen five from the stairway. Um, uh, so again, you can see here's the wetland line called out and the coastal jurisdiction line, which is here. Um, and they're at the same dimension here. CJL and wetlands are at the same dimension here, eleven feet. But they separate a little bit as we walk through the property. Um, there's a pool behind and there is this area, we have that fire pit that was shown in the picture, uh, just before. Okay? Um, now, our vacant lot was buildable or is buildable. And this is a picture of a fifteen hundred square foot house approximate. It's just a sketch that shows what we could do. We would need variances, but as you can see, a very substantial portion of the vacant lot is wetlands and it doesn't have the depth that the house lot has. So, um, all of this has been basically restored and there's a little strip here that we're going to stop mowing. Uh, and we're going to plant a landscaping buffer here. Um, and Matt Pop, our, our engineer, our architect, our landscape architect will talk about that. This is our site plan. Um, it's a blow up of it. And we're proposing two rows of silt fences and a construction fence immediately adjacent to, uh, upland. And that will allow us access for construction vehicles to get around and do the construction. And there's some minor regrading in here that's going to be done. It's thirty cubic yards. We had proposed to expand the parking lot here, but it was pointed out that we were creating a parking space in the front yard. And that's not allowed. So we would only use temporary gravel to expand this because the applicants intend to occupy the house while this addition is built. Now, the gutters and leaders come down here and these are the splash pads. And you can see that they're located a distance away from the wetlands. So that the, uh, the storm water from the addition is going to be treated by sheet flow before it hits the wetlands. And the grass that's there, upland of the wetlands will remove particulates and provide thermal renovation so that you don't have hot water running into the wetlands. Um. In addition, um, let's see, uh, we're going to be installing cul-de-sacs over here to treat the driveway runoff, which is going to improve the quality of water that migrates into the wetlands. So we're doing a fair number of things to improve the quality of the wetlands. And this is the landscape plan and this is the latest version. We've had a number of discussions with staff about this. And Matt Pop, I think you're on. Would you be, would you, uh, this plan has been submitted and is part of the application, but we revised it today to show a number of things, uh, and make some concessions that staff had requested. So Matt, would you be prepared to address this?
Sure. Thank you, Alder.
Matt, Matt, before you begin, um, uh, have, have, have you seen the letter from Deep, uh, that, um, the staff received, uh, today?
No.
Okay, oh, okay, um. Please, go ahead.
Uh, again, Matthew Pop, Landscape Architects, Environmental Land Solutions, uh, were located in Norwalk. I prepared the, uh, plan before you. Uh, we revised it based on the, the staff comments and the areas that are, uh, clouded. Um, those are kind of the revisions, but I'll just go over, um, a little bit of the site and then, uh, what we're proposing on, uh, this plan. Again, the tidal wetlands are kind of between the house and the five mile river. Um, half of them, or I would say are un-mowed and maybe about the other half are mowed. Um, it, it's readily identifiable, the, the, the tidal wetlands. Again, tidal wetlands are based on vegetation. Inland wetlands are based on soils. So when you're out there, you could easily see where the tidal wetlands are. There's actually a grade change. So when you're walking in the back, it slopes down, excuse me, about two feet or so. And that's where the tidal wetland line, uh, is, um, is located. Steve Danzer, um, professional wetland scientist, he was the one that delineated the tidal wetlands. Um, again, uh, there was, uh, fragmites, uh, within the wetlands. Uh, before I saw the site, I guess a couple of years back, fragmites is a non-native invasive species. It, uh, takes over, um, native habitat, has a low wildlife, uh, value to it. Uh, and, uh, the homeowner was able to, uh, remove all of that. I didn't see any fragmites on their site and to the site, uh, to, on this plan, to the right of our site, which would be to the north. Uh, the fragmites was removed on that site also. Which is, I think, remarkable that they, that they did that and they had that, a great success. Um, but on this plan, uh, we are, uh, behind the house, kind of the area that's got a hatch to it. On either side of the walkway that goes to the dock, uh, we're going to stop mowing the tidal wetlands, uh, and that's about six thousand uh, square feet of tidal wetlands that we're going to, again, just let, return back to a tidal marsh. So that would be enhancement. I would consider that great for wildlife habitat. Um, the second thing is, um, there's an alliantis tree. Uh, I think it's just on the, the vacant lot. Again, that's a non-native, um, invasive tree, host to the spotted lanternfly, which is kind of a new insect. Uh, that tree is being removed. Um, we're, we are removing one additional tree where the house is, uh, addition is proposed. Uh, we are proposing two, uh, new oak trees. Uh, you can see them on a, right there and, and that vacant lot. Uh, to the left of those along the property line, we're proposing, uh, three, um, American hollies, usually along the coast. I try to propose evergreens. Evergreens are great for wildlife habitat, especially wintering owls that come from the north. Um, that winter, uh, in Connecticut, they're always in red cedars or hollies, it seems like. So we're proposing them. And then between, um, those trees in the wetland, we have a row of shrubs. There's, uh, thirty seven native shrubs, bayberry and groundzul tree. Those are kind of coastal plants, um, there. Uh, if you go to the far right, uh, there's NOFA notes on how to maintain the site in an environmentally friendly way, you know, before you fertilize, uh, you would get the soil tested. Um. You know, things like that. So those are kind of general, uh, landscape, uh, practices that we would, uh, agree to on this, uh, property. Um, to delineate where that tidal wetland line is so we don't, you know, so we don't, so we're not mowing in there in the future. We're proposing, uh, five, like, survey markers, like a four by four granite, uh, you know, post that would be flush to the grade. And you could see them. So those are kind of delineate the, uh, where that line is between the, the lawn area and the, the tidal, uh, wetlands. Uh, and the top left, uh, we have a tree protection, uh, actually top right rather, have a tree protection, a detail. Uh, right there, there's one tree that's kind of near the, uh, addition right there that we're going to make sure that we, uh, don't impact that during construction. So we have that, a detail with some detail, uh, notes. And again, I'd just like to, again, say, uh, again, that the, we are proposing an underground detention galleries to treat the runoff from the existing driveway. Think that's a great feature to treat the stormwater runoff, um. Um, again, the road pavement collects the sediment, pollutants are attached to sediment. So again, that's a great feature to have, um, to help the water quality from the site. Um, so the addition is located on, uh, a, a well-maintained lawn area. Maybe about a thousand square feet in size when you include the addition and the patio. Um, so again, there's one tree being removed. We're proposing, um, you know, the, the addition and restoring about six thousand square feet of tidal wetlands. We have the plantings there. Uh, I think I'll end near for now and there'll be.
Matt, Matt, do you want to talk about this, uh, note down at the left?
Um, uh, yeah, uh, sure, that, that's. Thank you. Um. Let me blow it up. So if, if any of those plantings die, you know, within two years, you know, we'll replant, uh, those with it's probably the same species or something very similar. I think after two years, that area, we're hoping that uh, becomes a naturally, uh, maybe shrub, uh, thicket. So, uh, we would think some of these plants would come, would, would germinate naturally here, especially it's a groundzul tree. Um, and, and maybe some high tide bush just below that elevation. So again, any, uh, those plants that die, we'll replace them, um, within the, you know, the, the two-year period or so, but again, we're not anticipating that, you know, they would die.
So.
Darius, you have a question?
Yes, excuse me, uh, Mr. Pop, has your team had a moment to, uh, review the letter from Marcy Ballant from Deep?
Uh, no, I have not, no.
Okay.
So. Well, we did add one more note regarding the fragmites. We're probably going to just continue to, you know, go out there and check the marsh, you know, routinely. It's again, there's a lot of effort to get rid of it. So we just want to make sure that, um, you know, that we're still keeping after it and some of, I would expect over time, some would probably regenerate, uh, and we'll take care of that and control that.
So, um, there were three issues raised by staff and I, I, I feel sort of handicapped since Deep sent their letter this afternoon, I assume, and we haven't seen it. It, I, to my knowledge, I haven't seen it. Um, Matt obviously hasn't. Um, is there anyone, uh, I, I'll, I'll finish with our presentation, but I feel handicapped if Deep is weighing in at the last minute and we don't get a copy.
Uh, I, I think it, it came, it came late in, uh, the day. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure there was an opportunity to get it out to you in time. Uh, I, I think in fairness, uh, to you, um, we should give you an opportunity to review that, come back to us.
Absolutely.
Before, before we take action.
Um. Hey, I, 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 our app, our client would very much like to close this tonight and get a decision. Um, I don't know, uh, Maura, I think is mo- watching, um, um.
I can.
I don't think we can render a fair, uh, decision until you've had an opportunity to respond to the, um, uh, issues that Deep has raised. Um, because we need those answers as well.
Is there a way to, like, email to us and then maybe go on to the next item on the agenda and then come back to us?
Uh, I think not, but Steve, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I, that's what I was just going to suggest. I was going to say we can forward that on now, um. And then, yeah, we, we can take care of the.
That would be great. And then we'll, we'll take a look at it and if we can address it uh, and closely hearing tonight, that's great. And if we can't, we at the, at least, uh, would continue it to sometime in January if we need time.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll try to do that now. I'm not sure whose email. I think I probably have Matt's email somewhere, so I'll, I'll try to do that right now.
Very good. Thanks, Steve.
Steve, if, if I may, that letter is on the city website.
Oh, that's right. Yes, thank you.
So, Mr. Pop has access to the city website. That's the letter dated November fifteenth that we're referring to, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's there. You can just go on the city website under your.
Yeah, it's on the application page, uh, Matt. There's, if you go on the P and Z website, it's, uh, pending applications. Uh, and it should be listed there, you know, by, by the address for the property and then you can access the letter.
Very good.
All right, we will leave this meeting and we'll come back as soon as we can. All right, I, I, actually, I'm going to mute myself. And I think, uh, uh, uh.
Okay, that's fine. Um, but we do need you to unshare. Uh, perfect. Thank you very much. All right, then, uh, we're going to move on to twenty twenty three dash, uh, sixty five SPR.
Lou, do you think, do you think we can take, do you think we can take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it. We were going to take it at nine. It's eight fifty six. So, yeah, I guess we, why don't we get together? So, yeah, I guess we, why don't we get together at nine oh six?
Okay, but Stephen and Galen have their hands up.
I'm sorry, Galen. I didn't see your hand.
Ask for a break.
We're taking it now for the next ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next item is twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five SPR. Simon Wilson Taylor. Twenty-three Covewood Avenue, conversion of existing detached structure to an accessory dwelling unit. Report and recommend action. This is a site plan review. Mr. Taylor, would you like to tell us about your proposed ADU?
Thank you very much. Good evening. It's obviously a very long evening for all of you, so I don't propose to make it any longer than necessary. I have a very short presentation just to give you some context. I think it's very simple. You tell me and we can we can then discuss any any concerns you may have. So I need to share my PowerPoint. Okay. Hopefully you can now see a plot plan on the screen.
Yes.
Okay, this is actually a plot plan that was prepared by the previous owner of this house. I've owned the house since two thousand and eleven. And Mr. and Mrs. Nestler owned it before me. The house was built in about nineteen twenty-nine. You see in the top right corner of the lot is the house itself. And then to the left of that, this survey was done in nineteen ninety-seven by Arkhamon is is a what's described as a shed. The proposal before you today is for us to actually continue the work that the Nestlers started to convert that shed into an accessory dwelling unit. A small, small accessory dwelling on the property. The plan is to use the existing foundation. We're not extending in any direction by any amount. And to build a second half-story on the property of raising the roof slightly on the property. Just to give you some context for what we're looking at, I took some photographs today so that we could see even with most of the leaves down on the trees, we could see what the lot looks like and the landscaping around it. So we have a small house on the right-hand side. And the shed that we're proposing to convert is the building you see on the left here. Just slightly more close up, you'll see that the building itself is sort of nestled into the hillside somewhat. And the the grade goes up towards the back of the property by about three or four feet at the back of the property.
And is that Highland Avenue behind the shed?
Highland Avenue is directly behind. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So if you see the door on the left-hand side, the next photograph is taken standing directly in front of that door, looking away towards Covewood. Behind the pine trees on the left is the Myerson's House at twenty-three Covewood. Behind the bushes on the right is the Griggs House at seventeen Covewood. And as you can see, we're very well secluded and protected in both directions by the landscaping on the property. Looking in the other direction, looking, you know, this ninety-degree angle to that, looking now parallel to Covewood and Highland, looking south towards the the sound. Again, very well protected. And again, looking at the back of the property. You'll see there's a stone wall there and we're now looking towards Highland at the back of the property. So again, very well nestled into the into the hillside. The plans have been prepared for us by Palumbo Architectural Associates. The plan is to raise, actually, I should go back to wow, sorry. My mouse has given up on me. Okay. The I want to get the elevations. Okay, elevations, right. Some reason my presentation software keeps moving forward by itself. The bottom right of this diagram is probably the easiest elevations to look at. Where you see in the left-hand picture, number one is the existing elevation of the property. A good elevation of the building with that door at the left-hand side. And you'll see what we're proposing on the on the right-hand side there. This raises the peak of the roof by about two and a half to three feet. It's a small building. It's very small. The peak of the roof rises about two and a half to three feet. The overall average roof height has been calculated at thirteen feet, seven and a half inches, so well within the fifteen feet maximum allowable for this type of development. Square footage, the existing square footage is three hundred and eighteen square feet. The dormer, the on the the left-hand side of this elevation is is to accommodate a small bedroom on that second, on a new second floor, which would be a hundred and ninety-eight square feet. So total square footage is five hundred and sixteen square feet, which again is within the the recommended maximum allowable. I I don't think I have any further comments. I'm very happy to answer questions, but the the staff don't seem to have had any concerns about this proposed conversion. But so I'm open to any any comments or questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question about parking.
Yes, okay, the there's plenty of parking available on the property. Again, your staff have looked at this and said that that we there's a requirement for at least three parking spaces. And that we meet that requirement. If you if you look at the plot plan here, you'll see the driveway coming up from the bottom leads to a gravel open area around a rock island in the center. There there is a an enclosed garage underneath the existing house. There's parking for one car immediately in front of that garage as well. There's parking for two cars on the left-hand side over here. And you can fit at least one more car next to the island here. So by that, I calculate at least five parking spaces. We actually own more more cars than that, and we don't think we're going to have any problem parking them on the property.
Thank you.
Did you find any of the requirements in the regulation onerous to creating this ADU?
Do we find any requirements onerous? No, not at all.
Lou, if I may, I think my question is more to staff, but when we created the ADU regulations, I don't think we thought about an ADU on a rear lot. And if we did, does this application meet that, meet the requirement? I mean, the building's already there, so it's not a new construction.
Yeah, so when we originally wrote the ADU on the, the idea was that we if the primary use of the lot was a single-family house, then essentially the rest of the lot doesn't matter. We wanted to allow them on as all the lots that were the primary use of single-family residents. So based on that, the location of the detached structure complies with setbacks and then ADUs kind of have their own little quirks about where they can be located on a lot. So given this one, for example, because it's less than twenty feet to the rear yard setback, it can only be fifteen feet in height. So other than that, it complies with all the detached structure setbacks, ADU setbacks, so no concerns on that on that front.
And Brian, how 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 many ADUs have we approved or have gone up since we changed the regulations?
So I think based on this one before us, I think we are up to, if my memory serves and you write number five. So it's not a significant number, but it's definitely more than we were permitting prior to the ADU regulation changes.
Are those just the detached ones, Brian, or are those included in the internal?
There were one or two internals, so those ones obviously don't come before the commission. So this would be the, I believe, the third detached ADU that we've we've had.
And one more question, Lou. And does this application require sending a notification to the abutting neighbors?
For site plan review, just required to notify them that you've submitted an application.
Okay, thank you.
Which has been done.
Thank you. Thank you, Simon.
Can I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
One more question. I applaud this. I think this is smart and you know, definitely going to approve it. I just have a question to staff. What is the front yard setback in a rear lot?
So it
Right up the driveway or is it start at that line?
Yeah, it's measured from the where the flag starts. So the depending on the zone, so for example, if you're in AAA zone, it'd be forty feet from where the flag starts.
Okay.
So yeah, we're not measuring from the the skinny access way from for your setback.
So technically, his parking is in the front yard setback. But it's pre-existing from nineteen twenty-eight. So you got in one year before the zone. I mean, you are so lucky. Because it got in before zoning even existed. Anyway, I just thought I'd ask for the benefit of the public. Because setbacks can get really complicated and and front yard setbacks for parking is a pet peeve of mine. Because I think we should be more generous with those, but I've always felt that way. But anyway, I applaud this. I actually, I'm imagining myself living in that little house. It's adorable.
Let's not, let's not keep Mr. Wilson Taylor in suspense any longer. I have a motion to approve the
I'm up, so I'll make the motion.
Mike moves. Is there a second? Galen has seconded. Anna tried. She wasn't fast enough. Let's do this with a show of hands. All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
It's unanimous.
By the way, a lot of people don't know this. Covewood was the route of the trolley to the Rotan Point amusement park from the South Norwalk train station. It went right up Trolley Way and through and down Covewood, and it went right down the middle of Covewood. So when this house was built, they could just walk down to the end of their driveway and go to the on the roller coaster down at Rotan Point. Anyway, just a little nostalgia there. A little to lighten up the evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening and Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six SPR. It's another site plan review. Wave Hill Breads, eighteen and twenty-five Lowest Street, change of use of existing buildings to boutique manufacturing. And, okay, Miss Leeson again?
No, hi, I'm Annie Walsh. I'm the office manager at Wave Hill Breads. Hi, everybody. Thanks for for your time and attention tonight. The boutique manufacturing that we're proposing is actually bread. Wave Hill Breads has been in existence since two thousand and five and operating in Norwalk since two thousand and eleven. We've been searching for a property that would allow our business to grow. We've had significant success at our current location, but we feel like we need more room so that we can expand our product line and and reach new customers. We've been baking traditional artisan-style bread with fresh ingredients locally sourced and no preservatives for families in Norwalk. We have a very strong presence at farmers markets, particularly the Norwalk Congregational Farmers Market in Norwalk and the Sono Farmers Market as well. We are operating and producing bread that sold at our location at Thirty High Street. But we are at more than fifty farmers markets in New York and Connecticut, including the Union Square Farmers Market in Manhattan. We were just recently added there and we're proud of it. So we are hoping to purchase two locations, eighteen and twenty-five Lowest Street in Norwalk. I'm not sure what else you guys need to know. We submitted the paperwork. So maybe you guys can guide me a little bit about what you need from further from us.
What's the secret to your sourdough?
Tim's on. He can answer that question better than I can, but I'll give an answer and then he can give an answer.
You don't have to. It was a joke, but I your bread has witnessed a lot of kind of very personal moments, dinner parties, birthday parties. Yeah, so you can do no wrong in my book.
Further away from me.
I concur with that, Mr. Chairman.
And I I do guys, I buy the bread every time I go to the Congregational Farmers Market on the Green.
Yeah, we love that market.
And sometimes I get there late and you only got a muffin or two left, but I'll buy the last thing there, whatever you got. For example, crumbs. I buy the crumbs.
Steve,
I have no questions.
Any staff, any staff comments on this?
Nope, this is generally a change of, just a change of use. If we could, we'd issue it over the counter, but the regulations say it needs a site plan review, so that's why it's before you tonight. I think it's good to keep Wave Hill in Norwalk, and this is kind of the users that we're kind of trying to attract to Norwalk.
What what's your, what's your planned schedule for actually moving your operation?
Tim's on, and I think he can answer that. But so we've made, we formally made offers on both of the locations. We were hoping very, very strongly that we'd get approval from you guys. So that's going to move through its cycle. I think it will be thirty to sixty days for closing. And then we'll begin moving in the first quarter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we want, we want to do it as quickly as we can. The the winter season's a little bit of a slower time for us. So the timing on this is is actually pretty good from a business perspective.
Any other questions before we take action?
One question maybe for staff in the memo. It talks about an opportunity to remove some parking. Do you mind jumping into that a little bit more in detail?
Yeah, so if you if you're going up Lowest Street, you can see that in front of, I think it's eighteen, which is the one on the right. They have some sort of like, I wouldn't call it on-street parking. It's technically off-street parking, but it's parking in which you would have to back out onto the street in order to access. So there's nothing that like we can say that would essentially remove that parking because it's pre-existing, non-conforming. At some point, it was approved by the city. So, you know, from a planning perspective, we look at that and say the property to the south has a nice sidewalk running up. The property to the north has a sidewalk. It'd be nice to connect the two, but what that would result in is you know, Wave Hill having to to abandon that parking and and put in a sidewalk there, which is is not cheap and something that we can't require them to do per the zoning regulations since it is grandfathered. So it was just a request on our end to say, you know, you know, maybe it's not the safest thing for cars to be pulling in and backing out onto the street, but you know, in a perfect world, that parking wouldn't be there, but what can we do at this point?
Thank you. That's great context. As someone who walks your business, if you are able to consider putting in sidewalks there, that'd be great. But yeah, I understand that there is additional cost and that we can't require it.
All right, are we ready? Mike, you have another question?
Oh, I was just going to say this is how Pepperidge Farm got started. You know, they they were baking bread in their back kitchen and then moved to Norwalk. And now, unfortunately, they're moving somewhere. I forgot where, but they're not going to be here anymore, but they were, they've been here for, you know, almost a hundred years. And but they, but this is the kind of business that our zone change is is going to encourage. And it's something that we we've been actively pursuing. So We've been actively pursuing, so uh, hallelujah.
Can I, can I have a um motion? Uh, to approve the site plan?
I move that we.
I uh Chapin got his hand up first, so Chapin moves, Darius seconds. Um, and several others seconded, I saw. Um, let's uh do, we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor?
I'm raising my hand like yeast.
Darius, is your hand raised?
Yes, I uh.
Okay.
My face at the moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, then it's unanimous.
That's awesome. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in the bakery.
And the sourdough bread is the best.
Okay.
Toasted with butter.
Mr. Gleason, um. Um, are you ready to talk with us?
We are. Um, we're not surprised and uh. We believe we have or will address all of the D E P comments. And uh, my thought would be um. Let's just go through the the D E P letter. If you guys have it, Matt and I will speak to each of the items, okay?
Um, Steve, can you pull it up?
I could probably share it because I've got it on the website. If I can share my screen, I can pull.
Okay.
So. Do you see the letter?
Uh, we 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 do, but it needs to be a little larger than that.
Oh, uh.
Yep, just zoom in. Center, yep.
Yeah.
How's that? Okay, so first, um. This is not a substantial improvement, but it is an absolutely FEMA compliant addition. To a FEMA compliant house. This house was renovated in two thousand sixteen seventeen. It went through the coastal site plan review process. And um, it was uh, it was designed. It is not, while it looks like a basement in the uh existing house, it is not. A basement is a a floor level that has um is below grade on all four sides. The rear of the ground level underneath the habitable. Uh. House that exists today is at is is uh, the water can pour out the back without any problem. And we have flood vents in the existing house and we will have flood vents. In the proposed addition. Um, and instead of having, uh, we have a cross space under the proposed addition, which is what. People want to see, but it is not a basement under the existing house. So item one is um, we're addressing. We are completely compliant with FEMA in the addition and in the existing house. We exceed the A E thirteen standards. As I indicated earlier. Under A E thirteen, you have to have your first floor at elevation fourteen. The existing house is two point one feet above that. It's at sixteen point one. And our addition will match that. So we aren't just FEMA compliant, we are way compliant, way beyond. We're three feet. Above what where we need to be, um, uh, uh, above the base flood elevation of A E thirteen. So flood vents we've addressed. Typically, we don't see them in design development plans. And it seems like they're requiring it as part of the planning and zoning and there's a part of the zoning approval process. We would have to submit detailed architectural plans with calculations. Showing that our flood venting is one square inch of flood venting for every square foot. Of base of uh ground floor coverage. And that's what we will do. And to do it at this stage just didn't seem to make sense. So we're, uh, and I, that will be caught in your normal zoning process. So I'm surprised that they're requiring this. It seems like um accelerating a a a design. Um, when it's really not necessary. Um. Let's see, uh. The addition of living space. They're claiming that this is substantial additions and that we would be, uh, you have to evaluate that in light of uh risks of exposure. Well, first of all. We're not just at FEMA heights. We're two and a half feet, two point one feet above the minimum. So even if. The uh, the the base flood elevation is raised a foot. Twenty years from now, or two feet, even two feet twenty years from now. We are still going to be compliant. This is good for probably forty, fifty, sixty years at least and maybe more. So our design is way beyond what FEMA requires. And um. Are we resulting in significant exposure of life and property flood hazards? No, because we're way, we're exceeding the requirements. I would add, as we indicated earlier. We are giving up a vacant lot. On which we would have the right to build a house. That house. Could possibly be in the flood zone. And it would create additional risk. Of the life and property. It would include. Impacts on the wetlands, including driveways, including curb cuts on the state highway. We have the right to do that and we're giving that up. And the house that we would build, even if it's small, fifteen hundred square feet, a seven hundred and fifty square foot footprint. We're giving up that right. That's going to be far more intense and create more risk. Than what our proposed addition is. Because the Z B A has stipulated that the um. That the bathroom. On the second floor of this addition be a lavatory. They want the offices not to become bedrooms. And we've agreed to that. That's not a problem. So what you have is an existing five-bedroom house. The intensity of that use will not increase. As a result of this addition. We're going to have some home offices. And that's entirely consistent with the goals of the coastal uh uh N F I P standards. Because we're eliminating the possibility of additional development on the vacant lot. In fact, we're minimizing threats to life and property by giving up the vacant lot. The landscaping, um. This I'm going to turn over to um. To uh Matt. I think we can live with item four.
Uh, again. Again, Matthew Poplin, skip architect. Uh, yes, the number four, uh, you know, we we could agree that that says basically. To replace any dead plantings for a five-year period. You know, I would think, or I would hope after, you know, like. Three years or so that those plants become thickets and you wouldn't be able to identify like individual plants anymore. Uh, the one plant that they did recommend, the I V, the high tide bush. Um, the homeowner actually did plant that out there and she didn't have any success with that. So originally I had that on my plan. So we removed that. But again, that that plant grows, you know, within the uh, the the tidal wetland, the upper areas of that. So again, that's kind of a volunteer plant or pioneer plant. It's one of the first plants that come in. Um, so I would imagine that would, you know, in five-year period, that plant would be there. Um, let's just see. So I think again, we would agree to that, the five-year period. Um, number. You know, number uh five, uh, we are taking down the one uh tree. When you look at the photo. It's very thin trees right where the addition is and we're replacing that tree uh with uh five trees. So we're replacing it with two oaks. And uh three American hollies, which would be more valuable than a single uh plant. Um, it's kind of, that plant is. In the landscaped area, the plants we're proposing are down, you know, near the wetland or the. The hollies are. Little bit higher up in elevation. Um, those are will form thickets, so. Again, we'll take down the one tree. Uh, the uh. Ten-foot buffer. The main resource on the site is the Five Mile River um by far. I was on the Greenwich Wetland Agency for sixteen years and before we would throw out like without but why to buffer. We would want, or we always would assess kind of the impacts of the, but the development had on the wetlands. So again, the the addition is up proposed on the existing lawn area, so it's going to remove about a thousand square feet of lawn area. And we are enhancing um the tidal wetlands with six thousand square feet. Uh, that ranges between uh. Ten feet width, no doubt at the southern end, to about seventy feet. At the northern end. So that we're increasing the buffer to the river at the northern end by seventy feet. Uh, the ten-foot um. Buffer along uh the tidal wetlands, the southern end of the site, I think we have that, but just uh behind the existing house. Um, it would make uh access around that house difficult. Um. And again, I don't think it's needed. Again, this project's not having an adverse impact uh to the river. It's not having an adverse impact to the tidal wetlands. Um, so again, I don't think that is warranted, that additional ten feet. Let's see, um, the next one, number uh six. Actually, by five, with the Frag Mities, with the homeowner, um, with with her success, she could probably uh recommend, you know, be a source of uh. You know, a reference source for removing Frag Mities. Um, again, hundred percent success rate on this site. And from based on photos, um, it looked like it was um. Very dense Frag Mighty stand, which she removed. The number six.
Um, I can address that.
Okay.
Um, we have already provided the driveway detail. We are, uh, we've we've agreed that we're going to have a temporary driveway structure. We've provided a supplemental site plan that addressed the volume and location of grading and cutting and filling. There were no comments in the final staff memo about grading, cutting and filling. Those were satisfactorily addressed in the revised site plan. That was submitted uh over a week ago. Um, item seven, um, uh, we're happy to consult with the D E P if necessary, but um. We think we have grounds to move forward with this and our biggest concern, um, so I I I mean. Uh, let's go back to our, uh, I'm going to go off of this. Um. Memo. And let's go back to our presentation. Oh, I got a screen share again, sorry. Um, let me get this. Okay, this is Matt's uh revised landscaping plan. Obviously, we'd have to increase the date. His note says two years. We would change that to five years. Um, uh, per D E P's recommendation. I think that's the note down at the bottom. We're happy to do that. Um, but we have, we had prepared some reasons to limit the lan- landscape buffer. Uh, to supplement what we thought we needed to address, but. As Matt indicated, we see mowing of six thousand square feet of wetlands. For the addition, which has a six hundred and sixty-seven square foot. Footprint, that's the addition itself. If you add the uh stairs and the uh. Uh, platform, it's actually less than a thousand. It's probably um about nine hundred square feet. I mean, that's a six to one ratio in terms of impacts. And removing lawn is actually a benefit. The wetlands are readily identified by the toe of the slope and by the color of the plantings, as I pointed out. In uh our review of uh the the picture from the back. The landscape buffer would restrict access around the elevated terrace and the existing deck. Um, the lawn maintenance Sanofa standards assures minimal impact on the wetlands. The landscape buffer would not reduce impact on or provide greater protection to the wetlands. Um, you have, uh, you know, it, we don't see it as providing additional protection. The sheet flow of stormwater from the addition provides thermal thermal and particulate renovation. And the applicants got neighbors to, you have to look at what they've done. And I think you need to give the applicants credit. For the fact that we have a viable wetlands is thriving with wetland plants native. Um. On the vacant lot and on neighboring properties because of what the applicants have done. So um, the neighbors have restored their wetlands and they provide and our people provided plants at their cost. So they've been really good citizens. And I think that to take ten feet away for a a a buffer, just because it seems. A good, I, you know, I just don't even think it's a good idea uh uh behind the house. Let them have access. And oh, by the way, we are going to continue, we, I think we should be allowed to continue to mow. Around uh uh the access from the dock. Uh, to the upland, which are pavers. And that was approved by the D E P. The D E P gave the applicants a choice of, do you want to have a lifted? Deck. You know, on pilings or pavers to access your dock. And the pavers are far less intrusive. And. A ten-foot buffer. Along the wetlands behind the house is going to be very intrusive. It's going to limit. Um. I I I I, and we just think that that's um. Too much in light of what the applicant has already demonstrated, is their commitment to environment. And to protecting things and their agreement to stop mowing the wetlands. And the proposal to mark them with monuments, so they can be, the wetlands can be readily discerned if there's any enforcement questions. So we had proposed some modifications of the stipulations in the draft approval resolution. Um, and. Items up to eight in the draft approval were perfectly acceptable to us. But we're proposing that instead of an enhanced wetland buffer. The limit of the wetland buffer behind the house will be marked as provided in the landscape plan. That we submitted today. That the planting will be implemented. We're accepting uh ten, eleven. We would change eleven dying within five years. And we would uh rely on the landscape architect to do something that was a suitable. Um. And then all mowing shall cease as depicted in the landscaping plan. The only exception would be the strip around the pavers. So those are the suggestions we have. If you want to do a stipulation that allows us. To um, you know, avoid what we think is unnecessary. That the buffer does not really provide additional protection to the wetlands and that the real resource is the river. And that um. Uh, ten feet is really. Uh, I I it seems like a grab. It just doesn't seem appropriate, given the proximity of the existing structures to the wetlands. The deck and um, uh, the proposed addition. We would have to go underneath the elevated terrace if we had a ten-foot buffer. Adjacent to the terrace, um, because it's eleven feet. From the wetlands. That makes no sense in my mind. We're done.
Uh, I've got a question, uh, Steve. Um, I don't know how the other commission members feel, but um. I don't feel after this presentation. Um, with with without having Amelia or someone else from uh the staff here to judge. Um. Whether the response to the requirements of uh deep. Um, is adequate or appropriate. I'm not saying that it isn't. Uh, I'm just uh saying that I don't feel comfortable based on this brief. Uh, additional uh presentation. Um, I wouldn't feel comfortable. Um, voting on this. Um, I wouldn't. I wouldn't know where 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 to stand uh on some of these deep issues. Um. Advice from staff?
Um, well. Yeah, I I I think as you indicated, Amelia would probably be the best person to address that. Obviously, she's not here. I know the applicant's anxious to. Get in a decision. Tonight, um, would it be easier to go through the deep, you know, maybe if. Get in a decision tonight. Would it be easier to go through the deep, you know, maybe if, either if Mr. Wilder agrees just to. Pull the deep letter back up, or we can pull it back up and just go through them point by point and then, then see if we can address those.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I mean, just.
Does, does anyone else share my feelings about this?
I do.
I thought the concerns were really well addressed myself.
Yes, so, so did I. And we could approve it with a, with a condition that they meet with. Staff for final approval of the deep. Issues.
I mean, let's go through them if we can. I mean, FEMA compliance, I mean, item one should not be a concern. We already, you guys already approved the addition to the house.
I'm sorry. Didn't we just go through?
I thought we did too.
Yeah, I have a question. Is this a deep letter, Steve? Is this like the deep letter that we got about Water Street? Where they sort of said somebody that, something to everybody saying, we don't think you should do this, and it's not binding and. It's outdated based on something from nineteen seventy-nine.
So deep is required to be a referring agency on this application. But their, again, their decision and their recommendations are not binding on the commission. You're. Free to exercise your own judgment on whether you feel it's appropriate or not appropriate. I guess that's it in a summary.
Well, Mike here.
Yeah, Mike.
I, I, I understand the. The argument that the applicant is making to not do the ten foot buffer, and I accept that. Actually, you know, considering the history of the. The ecological restoration basically is what it was. It was a home, you know. A homemade ecological restoration, which was pretty, pretty substantial. But I'm going to throw a curve ball into here because. One of the adverse impacts described in the CAM law. That is not addressed here and wasn't addressed in the original application when this house was, was renovated. Was the. I'm going to read it. Degrading visual quality through significant alteration of natural features of vistas and viewpoints. That's defined under adverse impacts on coastal resources in the CAM law. I have to just say that I was so upset when. These owners built that fortress wall that blocked a historic view. Which was one of the best views of the Five Mile River Harbor that you could have. When you came down Rowayton Avenue and you sat at the light, or if you were coming up Cudle from Darien. And you got this view through the woods. It was an old chain link fence that was, that was, you know, basically transparent. But you had this view, beautiful view, all the way up the harbor. And when this wall started going up, I thought, oh my God, I hope that they, you know, they stop at two feet. No, they continued. They literally blocked the view of the harbor to the public, thousands of people every day. Drive by there and the gateway to Rowayton was destroyed by this huge wall. That was squeezed in between the trees, right on the edge of, I mean, they had the right to do it because their property literally goes into the street. You know, it's, it's kind of an unusual situation there. But they could have done a picket fence, which would have fit in with Rowayton. They could have done a nice picket fence. That was three feet that you would have seen through or above. But no, it's this massive wall. I, the only way I'm going to prove this is if they take down the wall on the extra lot. So that we can restore one of the vistas that was one of the great things about driving into Rowayton from that direction. And, and regardless of all of the other things that they did to the wetlands and everything, by blocking that public view. I just felt like that was an assault on the, on, on the whole. Public that always enjoyed that view. And I, and I know people that were upset about it. I know somebody who was so mad about it, they, they wanted to blow it up with dynamite. And, and that wall to me is, anyway, I'm just so upset that they're going to first. I'm sorry, I cut myself off, probably just as well. But that, you know, that historic, we don't deal with scenic value enough. In the CAM law, and I'm, I'm the first one to say CAM is outdated. You know, it is from nineteen seventy-nine, or I think it was approved in nineteen eighty. And then they hold, they, they don't even deal with resilience at all. There's no mention of that. That word doesn't even exist. And I make that argument all the time. So that's, Anna, that's what you were referring to, I believe, because I brought that up. And, you know, and, and deep does have to follow the wall and they have to provide these, these letters. And sometimes we do ignore them. And there is no mention of the visual scenic quality here because they didn't know the history of what was taken away. And which was really this, I won't, I won't emphasize it enough. And I feel like I, I really am so upset about this. That, that this property that was iconic at the, really at the end of Rowayton Avenue. At where people sit at the light and look out, now they're looking at this fortress wall. I curse every time I see it. So I may be biased, but I'm, I'm not going to prove this unless they agree to take the wall down in front of the. Empty lot, which won't affect them, won't affect their privacy. And, and it would open up a view. It would be a huge. Public relations success for the zoning commission. Otherwise, I'm voting against this.
Mike, I, I, I certainly understand your anger over this.
It was an assault on the, on the, I swear, it was an assault on the community to build that.
I don't disagree with you. However.
Did I address?
It doesn't, it, it's.
I know, I know.
You don't really have the right not to approve on the basis of something that has nothing to do with this. Directly with this application.
Well, it does. I mean, it does.
You have to do what you need to do. I understand that. I don't think you're following the law in doing it.
I believe in restoring what the CAM had required initially. And unfortunately, we don't have. A five mile river harbor, harbor commission, which we should. We never, we never got one. I mean, it's basically, if there is one, it's completely silent. Because we have a Norwalk Harbor Commission. And their jurisdiction only goes as far as, as Farm Creek. And then it's supposed to be another harbor commission that would have dealt with all this. You know, at the appropriate time when all this was approved years ago, but. You know, maybe the sixth taxing district can discuss this in their next meeting. But there is no active harbor commission in Rowayton. And there should be, because they would deal with things like this.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mushak, you are not reading the CAM statute correctly. And I myself had thought that your interpretation was correct until. The DEEP issued a memorandum. Saying that public views and vistas are not over private property. That if you, you're claiming that the public had a right to look over my client's property down Five Mile River. And I understand that view was really iconic and beautiful. But it is not a view protected by CAM. And the state DEEP has acknowledged that. It has to be over public property. Essentially, you're claiming that CAM establishes a view easement over my client's property. That would justify removal of this wall. The wall was installed after they experienced a number of accidents with cars hitting what was the prior fence. And they have kids that play immediately adjacent to that wall. Because they have so much wetlands on their property. So they did it for safety reasons. And I regret that you feel so passionately about it that this might cause you to vote against an approval. When doing so is not justified by the law. And I'd be happy to provide that memorandum, but I can't, I, I, I don't think I can locate it right now. But there's nothing in that about views in the statute about public vistas. Being over private property and the deep has acknowledged that's not what CAM is protecting. And if it did, it would be subject to a constitutional challenge for taking people's property without compensation.
Well, I would just argue that a two foot wall would have stopped a car, not a four foot wall that blocks the view.
Let's, let's move on. The applicant is anxious for us to take action on this. I think that we should if we, if we feel able to.
Oh, and by the way, if anybody wants to see that view, just go to Google Earth Street View. And there are different views of different years, but you can still capture that beautiful view all the way to Long Island. From the main entrance to Rowayton that was blocked by that, that. Really overbuilt wall that doesn't even look like it belongs in Connecticut. Anyway, I'll stop.
What is the pleasure of the group? Do we want to continue with? This second explanation, or do you want to move on to action?
I think it makes sense to hear from staff.
Yeah, I would prefer to hear from Amelia on this, but I guess we can go at the will of the group.
I'd like to hear from Amelia too.
If, if we want to hear from Amelia, then we're going to have to hold off on action till our next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that, that raises some concerns just from scheduling standpoint, because we technically don't have any meeting scheduled. I mean, we could do, do this as an additional agenda item at your meeting next Tuesday night, perhaps, after we do the meeting. Of the zoning preview, but other than that, we don't have anything scheduled for regular action for, until technically January.
I'm fine with that.
I think, yeah, we may be fine with that, but that holds the applicant up for quite.
Well, let me, I, I want to ask a question, process question, if I may. I don't mean to interrupt Galen, I apologize. But are you thinking that the staff would give you input? We would close the hearing now and then you'd get staff input? Or would we have a response, be the ability to respond to staff comments?
No, you would, you would, we, we would, we would allow you to have. Input on staff comments.
I, I, I would think that would be necessary for due process.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's perfect, perfectly reasonable. And I think the way to do that would be to hold the. This session up and simply continue it. To the, the next appropriate time we have available for it.
Would that be December third, or are we talking some other day?
Week, I believe.
Oh, next week?
I think December, November twenty-first is your next meeting. So I would recommend doing the, we have the public session of, for, to preview the change to the zoning text map. You know, once that concludes, which is whether it's an hour to two hours, I would then. Add this on as a second agenda item and revisit, excuse me, revisit it at that point.
Thank you for the clarification. I have to move my, move it from my calendar by one month.
After the presentation on the whole zoning rewrite?
I was thinking, don't we already have a full docket?
No, that's the, on the twenty-first, that was the, that's a special meeting, which was only for that purpose.
But we're also permitting people to text us questions. So that's going to run to several hours, I suspect, at least.
May, well, maybe, but I mean, I can tell you, beyond that, December fifth and sixth are public hearings for the. So you definitely don't want to do it at those meetings.
No, I agree.
Only other thing scheduled is the, the follow-up where you're looking to take action, which is on the twelfth and the thirteenth of December.
I don't think we want to do it then either.
I think that, to be honest with you, the presentation that Brian and I probably are going to put together. Will run an hour at the most. And I think we can, you know. Since it's just people typing in questions, I mean, at some point, I think you're going to cut things off. I would anticipate that will actually go fairly quickly versus a public hearing, which is testimony, then response.
Right.
A couple of us have. Our hands up, Luke.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Rowena and I have our hands up.
Please, go ahead. Then Richard?
Hand me first.
Thank you. I don't have a particular, you know, bone to pick with the applicant. I will agree with Mr. Mushak that I get frustrated when I drive by that wall too. But it is private property. I was here before the wall was up and used to look at that little barn that sat down on the flood plain and we'd all get excited when there was a big. You know, storm coming to be like, oh, is the barn going to be in the water? Yeah, it was. And then, oh, is the barn in the water? How deep is the barn in the water? You know, all of these little iconic things, but. The barn isn't there anymore. I think the owner, in removing all the Fragmities, that's a tremendous. Amount of work and dedication, because people don't realize how invasive those things are and. We're not supposed to, you know, have them. They're in disturbed areas. I think Mr. Gleason kind of answered the CAM questions. And, you know, it looks like a big addition, but it looks like it meets all of the requirements. So I'm not sure what Amelia is going to tell us. It sounds like they're. Putting all of the proper buffers and vegetation. That's really, that's the most important thing to keep. You know, the river from moving further up the embankment and it's their house that's. The most at risk, even though it's well out of the flood zone. So I don't see holding this up is really going to. Change anybody's mind per se. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I agree with you, Carrie.
Richard?
Yes, I, I agree totally with, with what Tammy just said, although I don't know anything about the wall. But the, the thing that's really concerning to me. Is we had a, you know, I, I think. A very complete and comprehensive answer to each one of the paragraphs in this. And from my perspective. You know, the only thing that really requires any interpretation would be the ten foot buffer. And I agree with the applicant's request regarding it. So if Amelia is going to give us a presentation. Is she going to? Like, listen to this first, you know, so we don't have to go through it all again, and Mr. Gleason doesn't have to go through it all again. I, I, I'm really concerned that this is going to be a, a, a major. Utilization of time that we don't really have.
Richard, if you and Tammy feel that way.
So do I.
Make, 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 make a motion and let's see if you have enough votes to approve it.
I make that motion.
Okay. Tammy, are you going to second?
Galen, I'll let you second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
And that's one question.
This needs, this needs to be. And we can, I guess we can rely on the staff. This needs to be updated. To include the changes. That the consultants have agreed to. I'm not sure we need to go over that again. But it, it will need that. Let's do a roll call.
I think Nick had a question.
I just have one question for staff. Did staff feel the three items you guys called out in your memo were adequately met?
I just had one question for staffs. Did staff feel, uh, the three items you guys called out in your memo were adequately met?
Brian, can you pull that one up? If you have a second?
Yes.
Sorry to delay this further.
That's okay.
Yeah, the only, the only point I was going to kind of, I was thinking about when you guys were having your, your discussion was, um, and whether the interpretation on the view sheds, you know, I haven't seen that report from deep, so I don't know what that actually states. Um, but the, you know, something you can consider as part of your deliberations is whether you feel that the, um, scope and scale of what's proposed, um, if, if reduced would lessen the impacts on, on the, uh, natural resources. So I think that, that's a conclusion you could make and, and that relates to the, um, to the bullet points that Brian has pulled up at the moment. It's kind of a shame to think that ZBA wouldn't, it would have been, I think, better if ZBA would have let them pull that building forward and then pulled it away from, I think that's, you know, you're, you're weighing zoning setback versus, uh, natural resources. And I think in this instance, a natural resource, increasing that buffer to the maximum extent possible is more important than making sure the structure's five feet further back from the street.
Yeah, it seems really silly from ZBA's perspective, but-
All right, uh, any other questions regarding this before we go to a vote?
Just, Steve, do you know, did the applicant have to pull a permit to install that stone wall?
Not based on the, I, I haven't seen that wall, so, but if it's under six feet, then no.
Okay, that's probably five feet. I don't, if you're in a dump truck, you might be able to see over it.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, I, I did agree that, uh, their defense of not having the ten-foot buffer was adequate. And, uh, you know, I got a bee in my bonnet, obviously, over that wall, uh, which I apologize for my tone, but you know, really, I did, I still feel like that was something that was not a very nice thing to do to the community. And it did not have to be that big. It could have been half the size. So, you know, my suggestion here would have been to put a condition for approval to reduce the wall to half the height, so that you could, uh, uh, someone driving by could see over the top only on the, uh, extra lot. And which is not in front of their house, so they have the, they still have the safety of the tall wall. And I think that would have been, I think that would have been justifiable. Uh, considering the impacts on lessening the view with the addition. But this is getting too complicated. You all know how I feel. So I'm going to be voting against this because, uh, you know, I just, I still find that that whole project uh, was, uh, was a disaster for Rowayton and still is.
Let's go.
The property owner looks like they have their hand up. I'm not sure if you or Mr. Gleason have any, if you feel it's appropriate to have the, the property owner speak at this time or?
No, I think, uh, I think we're going to vote.
Okay. And then did you have, uh, Mr. Bryce or Ms. Tabashnik seated for this?
Um, I'm taking Tabashnik, I believe.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, Tana.
All right. And with that, I will put Ms. Tabashnik on the spot. Ms. Tabashnik?
Um, abstain.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Abstain.
Mr. Williams?
I'll go last.
Uh, Ms. Langgallis?
I'm somewhat conflicted on this, but I think they met the application, so I will approve it.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Mushak?
No.
We'll come back to Mr. Williams.
I believe Mr. Schulman.
Uh, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And no pressure, Mr. Williams, but I believe you are the tiebreaker vote, so.
Well, I certainly have my reservations about this, um, application, but I do believe, given the response that they conveyed to us in regards to the letter from deep, that I will, I feel comfortable voting yes. Given the circumstances.
It is approved.
Five in favor, yes, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the time you guys have spent and wrestling with this. Thank you very much.
It was a wrestle. Have a good one.
All right, um, we, we have a fairly long list of minutes. If you can think back to whether you missed any of these meetings, I just asked that um, you abstain, uh, if, um, if you missed the meeting. Um, the, uh, first is, uh, the meeting of October eleventh. I have motion to approve the meet. Okay, Chapin has moved, JJ has seconded, uh, just show of hands, all those in favor. Okay, those meetings, uh, are approved. Uh, next, uh, the meeting of October eighteenth.
So moved.
Okay, Richard moves. Nick, did I see your hand up? Nick seconds. Uh, again, show of hands, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Okay. Also approved, uh, October twenty-fifth. Um, motion to approve. Uh, Anna has moved. I see several hands. I give this one to Tammy. Tammy seconds, all those in favor? Um, also approved.
One edit to that, uh, it says I was there. I was not, uh, but otherwise I agree with it.
Okay. And, uh, finally, November, November first. Um, motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Okay, Chapin moves, uh, Tammy seconds, all those-
Uh, I abstain. I was only there for half a meeting.
I abstain. I was not there.
Okay.
I abstain as well.
Okay, so we have three abstentions, all those in favor? Okay, okay. Minutes, minutes are approved. Steve, comments of director?
Sure, just one quick kind of question for the commission. Um, we have, uh, some kind of lingering items for the rewrite. You know, we have some other letters that have come in that we're going to send out Friday, nothing really long, um, and also haven't gotten a, hopefully by Friday, I'll have a written response to the ENNA comments. Is it for you guys, I, I think, because what will happen is you'll have the hearing on the fifth and the sixth, and then you guys will deliberate the following week. Is the format that we've used previously where we have stuff in a spreadsheet where the comment comes in or it's a letter and we respond back and you guys can weigh how that's, I can't even talk anymore, weigh the response from that. Is that an adequate way of you guys to view the comment and, and discern the information?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Thought it was good.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do that.
Uh, Steve, do you want to say anything about tomorrow night?
Yes, thank you. Yes, tomorrow night at six thirty in the community room is the first public session related to the Affordable Housing Plan. That's an in-person meeting only. And I'm forgetting the date, but it was on the flyer. I think it's the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth.
I think it's the thirtieth.
It, and that's, that one will be a virtual one if you wanted to attend that one, but the consultant team's been working the last week or so, doing a lot of, um, focus group meetings and stuff, and they're doing a really good job of talking to folks and getting out in front of things and they'll be at, um, some of the public events coming up, like some of the tree lighting things and those out, kind of getting the pulse of people that probably don't particularly or especially participate in some of our meetings. So I think it's going to end up getting some good data.
Okay, anything else?
The, so we just, what's the format for that? And how long?
I'm sorry, tomorrow night?
Yes, tomorrow night, yes, sorry.
Yes, I think it's, um, basically presentation first, kind of taught, they're going to give background, um, demonstrate, here's what we've kind of learned so far, and then it's a lot of group exercises around tables, um, getting feedback, going through exercises, uh, there'll be Spanish language translator there as well to facilitate that aspect.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I think, thanks, Steve.
Can I just ask a, put a clarification about the rewrite, confirming that the online public comments remain open until?
Yeah, we haven't closed it. Um, I haven't looked at it in about a week, so I'll have somebody check it, but the, the pace of what we've received is, you know, pretty slow.
Yeah, so the online public comments stay open until the second week of December or whatever, when we, when we're scheduled to deliberate, right, and
Yeah, that'll be-
They would, they would close at the end of the public hearing.
At the end of the public, and things that we hear from the online comments, then in the public hearing, we can still make changes.
Right.
Okay, I think.
Uh, Steve, the ad that, um, the staff has put together about the regulation update, has that gone out yet?
I think it may have gone out today. I was working from home, so I don't know if it actually got, like-
The reason I, I asked, um, this was brought to my attention by my wife. I should have caught it. Um, uh, app, uh, it says now, and then it says November twenty-first, six P M. Staff will give an overview of the changes considered and recommended. And then it says you will be allowed to provide written questions. Um, she didn't like the word allowed. Um, she thought it was rather harsh, sort of dictatorial. Um, and that, you know, something more like, uh, um, ri- written questions will be accepted.
Be able to?
If, if you're still, if you're still able to make a change, just look at it. Um, and if you agree, make a change.
Yeah, um, if, I mean, it's quite possible. It's already been emailed out to a lot of groups, so-
Yeah, and I understand that.
Changes, but we can change-
I definitely got it emailed already.
We can change the posted one, but yeah, some of it already went out.
Okay. Uh, any other, uh, comments from commissioners?
It's just one more positive point of clarification, because Brian and, um, was working with somebody about, um, the village standards in Rowayton and clarifying something. And so if, if a resident submits something for the rewrite in writing to you guys, that's only considered, but at what point one of the commissioners would have to make the recommendation for it to become an actuality? Brian, is that what you were trying to say?
Right, so at this point, so we referred out the proposed regulations to all of the statutorily required bodies, so we can't at this point, go back into the proposed regs and make red lines and, and recommendations based on staff. So if someone from the public wants, uh, something to be added into the regulations, they would need to make that request to you, the commission, and then you, the commission, would then need to weigh that request and consider adding it as, uh, like an additional, uh, you know, uh, text within the regulations.
But, but just, just to clarify, the, the, all that should flow through staff and then to the commission.
Right, right.
Right, yeah, 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 we don't, let's not go down that rabbit hole, but but I just want to make sure that if, you know, regardless of the comment that I got from somebody, um, that if anybody else, you know, we're having these public hearings, that the public thinks that just because we've already sent this draft to all the regulatory bodies, that there's no opportunity for them to make changes. You know, that doesn't sound very good, like, oh, we've already sent it off to the printer, sorry, we can't make the change.
We've, 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 we've always, uh, said that in our deliberations, um, we can make changes as we think appropriate.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's just that staff can't on their own sort of propose a change. Is that what you're saying?